All right, well, it is seven o'clock and I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, November, November eighteenth meeting of the Westernbury Planning Board. And you know, we've used to do a thing at the beginning of these Zoom meetings. And I'd like to reinstate it just in case there are folks here who are not utterly familiar with all of us, which is to have each planning board member introduce him or herself. So I'll start off. I'm Ann Bardine. I'm the current chair of the planning board.
And Ray Cook, I've just been a planning board member now for many years.
Deb, you want to introduce yourself, please?
Oh, you got the whole mute thing going on there, Deb.
Well, somebody else want to jump in while Deb gets organized?
I'll go. Yeah, Brian Murphy, also a longtime member of the board. Thank you.
Rob Phillips, newest member.
Deb, would you unmute yourself and just introduce yourself, please? If you can hear us. You're, okay, she's trying to. It's not working. But that person that says Deb Hamilton is Deb Hamilton, who's our fifth planning board member and our associate member, Tim Cronin has not arrived yet.
Oh, he's here.
Oh, is he? Okay. I don't know. Tim, you want to introduce yourself? We've gone back to old school presentation style here.
Are you on, Deb?
I am on. I'm here.
Okay. And Tim, you want to just say hello to everybody?
Associate Planning Board Member. Good evening.
And also with us, of course, is Christopher Riley, who's our town planner. The first item on the agenda tonight, there's some background noise if anyone needs to mute.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get that off. I've, I've been in an active meeting as well. I can't seem to get it off.
All right.
Disconnect.
Just mute yourself for a minute. The first agenda item tonight is zoning workshop. We have a number of zoning matters that are in play here in the Commonwealth. And we are lucky enough to have Sam Jocelyn, who's our building commissioner and knows a lot about zoning to help us get through this. So Sam, you want to go ahead with your presentation, please?
So, hi, everyone. For those that don't know me, it's Sam Jocelyn. I'm the Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement official for the town. We had a couple of items that were asked to be taken care of during our search for a planner. One of them was a marijuana overlay district. West Newbury was a yes community, meaning we voted that yes, we would allow for marijuana establishments in town. With the, you know, on and off, having a planner, not having a planner, this fell by the wayside. So one of the first things that I put together, that really isn't so much for the planning board, but more for the Board of Selectmen, but I just wanted you to know if you saw it and it was out there, was the social equity bylaw for cannabis control. We were supposed to have this in place June or July first, twenty twenty-three. We're a little late, but better late than never. So this is really just the state cookie cutter, you know, example of a equity bylaw. And basically, it just goes through other laws related to transparency of process and then practices during agreements, equity standards, and having a plan in place for municipal equity. And there's grading schedules. We could create our own, but the state already has a template. So I just put in here that we would utilize the state's template. The states identified, I think it was thirty or so cities and towns across the Commonwealth that they feel were negatively impacted by marijuana use. And those are given some preferential treatment in applications. The, the reality with this is for the amount of space and availability that we will most likely have, we're never going to see multiple applicants vying for the same location at the same time. So I don't think it's, it's really going to be a, a bylaw that gets any use. But again, checking the box to make sure we got it in place was step one, so.
All right. Would you, would you explain to us then this would be a town bylaw? So where the responsibility lies and what the process is and the timeline for that?
So this one probably, like I said, I would assume the select board would sponsor it because it's going to be their authority for the negotiations of a host community agreement. Again, it's, it's kind of, it's cookie cutter. I would assume this would go, just like any other bylaw, would go to town meeting, get an explanation, hopefully get approved. But yeah, I, I think this one's going to end up in the books and a little bit dusty. Because again, I just don't see that high a demand for locations in West Newbury that will have, you know, a, a flood of people looking to come on in. So.
So question, what, why would we even contemplate having this?
Uh, it's mandatory.
Requirement.
It is a state requirement. So we, we should have, it was, we had a deadline of adopting one by July first, twenty twenty-three. Clearly, there's no penalty or no one really chasing us down to get it done. But in going through and developing the marijuana overlay district, I came across the requirement to have this in place and figured, well, I'm already, already, you know, knees deep. Let's, let's keep going. So I, I put together that, again, it wasn't a heavy lift because it's cookie cutter from the state. So.
But I, I've got another question in general, if I could.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah. I took a, a quick look at, at a couple of towns, Roland being one. And it looks like they just outright banned these. Did they not vote a yes?
Correct. They were a no community.
They were a no. So that's why that's allowed on there in their zoning, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So, so you'll be pursuing this with the select board, Sam? I'm sorry to belabor this.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through Angus, just let him know that it's, it's done. And, you know, my assumption again is they'll carry the water on this one and bring it forward. I'll, I'll let him have eyes on. If they want to change anything, they're welcome to. But at least it gives us a template to work off of, which was the state's template. So I didn't get there.
I'm assuming that the, we as the planning board will have to hold an, a hearing, a public hearing.
No, it's not a zoning bylaw, though.
Not on this.
It's a town bylaw, I think, right?
Yeah, this is a general bylaw. Yeah.
Yeah. This, this is more information from Sam than anything else.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make you aware in case you saw something out there that looks like a cannabis bylaw. Because it's, it is a, an equity bylaw for cannabis control, but it is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I guess I was, where does this fit in the numbering scheme, the town bylaws?
Um, I've numbered it in accordance with the, the bylaw. It's at the end, you know, I didn't know if they wanted to put it somewhere else. We really had nothing that it would fit into.
There you go. Okay, so forty-four.
Yeah, we typically just tack on new ones as they arise. We're not very comprehensive about, about our bylaw presentation.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's look at what does involve us then.
Thank you. Sure. So the, before we get going on this, I wanted to just put out there that this is a definite preliminary draft with little to no input from anyone in the town. I'm not a town resident, but I tried to write it as if I was or steal pieces of it from other communities as if I was. So there's some things in here that, and the same goes with the parking bylaw, that there may be numbers, figures, whatever that the board wants to change. Get, and one specifically when we get too distant from schools. The state standard is five hundred feet if we adopted that. Assuming we want this in the business district, there is nowhere in the business district that's not less than five hundred feet away from a school because of the churches. So that is a number we're going to have to take a look at. And again, the state allows us to adjust that to whatever we see fit. So I, I plugged in this, I think the state five hundred number just to have a placeholder. But anyway, we can discuss when we get there. But I just wanted to have that overview statement of, you know, this, this was a best guess, stealing the best pieces of everything I could find out there. And hopefully it's, hopefully it's not trashcan worthy. So we'll, we'll see.
Well, I, I, I appreciate you pulling this together and applying the Murphy principle where you're matching as much as possible whatever's on the state.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the reality is.
The location for it, whether it be business district or some other place, that's going to be, that's going to be something worthy of considerable discussion. Because I think some people will feel strongly about this five hundred feet business.
Yep.
And, and will want to try to find some other place. But, you know, I guess if, if the selectmen are, are leading the charge here, then they'll have some public meetings or something, hearings that try to establish a better location if, if it can't be.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
They're not, no, this, right, excuse me, the selectman won't be leading this charge. This is a zoning bylaw.
This is us. This is us.
This is one of our typical lead the charge situations. The other was a general bylaw, but this is zoning.
Yeah, this one you're stuck with.
It's an overlay district.
This is ours.
All right, all right, all right.
So, and, and one of the problems in looking at that and why I laid it in the business district is everything else in town is residential. And other than our industrial zone, which is a giant swamp or owned by the state of Massachusetts. So it felt like the, the most appropriate location for it.
I agree with you. I think it is the most appropriate location for it. But, I mean, we do allow businesses in residential zone through a special permit process. Would, would that approach not satisfy state requirements?
No, I mean, we can, we can place it wherever we'd like. It's, you know, West Newbury is your town. You, you decide where your, your district is.
I guess what I'm saying is.
Can we clarify something, though? I, I'm confused. When, when you talk about businesses and residential, you're not talking about retail. We don't have, uh, uh, retail. Isn't it home businesses, certain home businesses?
I think there, no, there are all kinds of businesses which we allow by special permit in a residential zone through a special permit process.
Is that correct, Sam?
I'd have to go look. I think mostly it's your bed and breakfast type of stuff.
Home businesses, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'll let, I, I'm wrong on such a regular basis. I'm, I'm willing to be very wrong about this. But let me, let me look up the bylaw and I'll tell you.
On that note, I am starting, or we have put together a use table to make it easier to figure out where the uses are allowed. So.
Good. We got, like a good table, Sam, as you know.
I, I love tables. Tables and checklists. They're, they're good.
So this is a special permit and process in any case, right?
Yeah. And I don't know if we want to just start at the beginning and.
Yeah, let's just go through it all. Why don't you go to the beginning and tell us what you did?
And again, I don't expect, I, I think you guys got this somewhat last minute or relatively late yesterday. So if we can, I'll just go through what, what we put into it. And then probably next go around can do whatever, whatever changes are deemed necessary. But the purpose and intent was pretty straightforward. Most of it relates to the state act that requires it. And then also the model language that most cities and towns use relating to protecting adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods and so on. So the establishment of the district, which is four point two, again, I just overlaid on the business zone for now until we have more discussion.
Can I jump in right there?
Sure.
So in our zoning bylaw, it's now in section four point three point three. Uses permitted in residential districts with a special permit. Commercial greenhouse, cider mill, sawmill, stables, kennels, animal hospitals, camps, restaurants, hotels, telephone exchange buildings, funeral homes, cemeteries, nursing homes, hospitals, congregate housing, nonprofits. So, you know, I, one.
It doesn't say retail.
Well, I'm resident, restaurants, hotels.
Well, those are specific items. It doesn't, it doesn't bless.
What I'm, what I'm saying here, Rob, is, is an approach, and I prefer to have it in the business district, but an approach, and my question for Sam is, if we just added this as a use that's permitted in residential districts with a special permit, would that satisfy the state requirement?
Sure. I think you'd get a lot of pushback because do you want a pot shop next to your house?
Well, that's where all the protections of the special permit process would kick in.
Yeah.
I mean, at the edge of, of the, of the commercial district, you have residences who wouldn't like marijuana. You might have a residence who doesn't want a marijuana facility right next to them either. I mean, commercial districts have boundaries. I'm just saying, Rob, it's not necessarily unrealistic to, to think that this would be an approach.
Okay, seems like it might.
According to some, yeah.
Might be possible. Okay. So one of the things we need to determine is the location of a district. That's what the general discussion is here, right?
Yep. Yep. And again, won't see it from my house. So I live in another town. So again, this is, this is your town.
You're the board. We gotta put it someplace.
Just not next to my house. I live in Bradford.
I understood. But I mean, I appreciate the sense of humor here, but I mean, we, we don't have a choice.
Correct. As a yes community.
We are going to locate it someplace in town. That's right.
There you go. And if the selectmen are championing the bylaw part of it, that also men- mentioned the district, didn't it?
I, I don't think they're championing the zoning bylaw. The zoning.
No, no, not the zoning bylaw, the town bylaw.
The equity bylaw?
As an equity bylaw, it's, yeah. It, it shouldn't guide our thinking much at all.
I'm just wondering if it has to be coordinated, but apparently it doesn't. Okay, just, just checking.
Yep. Nope. That is really more a process during authorizing and giving local approvals for licensing, similar to liquor licensing.
All right. But in light of, of how the MBTA thing went over the last couple of years, I definitely think we need to work with the select board when it comes to these discussions about what we would propose as the district.
Absolutely. I, I think, you know, and there's public hearings. And I would think possibly some sort of joint hearing or at least a representative from, you know, each of the boards attending meetings to, you know, ensure that the location's appropriate.
Yeah. What Ray's talking about is there has to be some upfront temperature checking taken, not just with the select board, but the population at large if possible. So.
Yeah, before we, before we have our proposed bylaw and go through the public hearing process, I think we need to somehow.
We have to do a check.
Yes. And the select, I think, out of respect and also because their input would be valuable, I think we need to coordinate that this whole thing with the select board carefully.
Sure. There's nothing that stops us from, from again, having a joint meeting on this where the public could weigh in at the same time we're discussing coordination.
Good idea.
So, so I take that as a given going forward now on, on most anything that we do that might have some level of controversy about it.
Yep. So.
Sorry, let me just interject here that, yes, this will be an ongoing process. In respect for Sam's time, I'd kind of like to get through the language of the bylaw. The first pinch point we've identified will be location.
Location.
Okay.
And I'm putting that in there.
No, the second will be the five hundred feet from, from places that might have schools. So there's two of them.
That's kind of a subset of location, but yes, the limits of that district.
So section three was definitions. I did point to any term relating to marijuana, shall we interpret it and define per the state general law. And then I called out basically your marijuana products and your marijuana, what do I want to say, functions or, or, or possible businesses.
Right. And this, this language matches the state word for word.
These are the state definitions.
Perfect.
So I, I, but I felt for clarity, having that in there to say, this is what a retailer is. This is what a delivery operator is, a delivery courier is. Because, you know, I, I'm not familiar, or I wasn't until I started getting to this, what the difference between a delivery courier and a delivery operator was. So these are the things that the select board would be approving licenses for then to go through zoning process. I think the reality we're going to see is most likely a retailer or a grow facility. That's fairly common. So anyway.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then general requirements, going through dozens of different cities and towns. I took all of the, I guess, the common themed items, which is A through L. The one, I guess, establishment or, or, or use I did put in as a general requirement. I prohibited no social consumption establishments. So I don't, the, the state laws seem a little fuzzy still on that. And I, I just, I didn't think it was appropriate to have essentially a pot bar in, in West Newbury. It, it just didn't seem to fit the character of the town.
That's fine.
A number of them just prohibited, so.
How many, do you know how many liquor licenses we have in town?
It's just one.
There's not many. And one of the things that I had done, because you're, you need to have a minimum number, which is that twenty percent number.
I think.
And then we're going to round up to the next whole number, which is probably going to be one.
I think it's one. I think, Rob, did you want to?
There's two things regarding liquor licenses. You know, what we've just been talking about is more about how many places can you serve and consume on the, on the premises. I'm not sure what that number is. It might be one, but, but, you know, not. Distinction is the same. You, you can have places where you can only sell and it gets taken out, or you can sell and sit down. I agree with Sam that, that we, we really don't have much room to move in that arena. What I did want to ask Sam about was, since, since growing is a thing, how does this get incorporated into a use for someone who now might be doing haying as opposed to growing the product? I mean, I can't imagine that happening in the retail, uh, uh, commercial district of our town.
So the growing of it is not protected if you're talking about agricultural use related to forty-eight-three. It is not currently a protected agricultural use. We could allow through special permit a grow facility that meets all the requirements.
But, but what my point is that imagine that growing actually was rather benign if properly placed. Besides having a district that you can retail in, would we be thinking about the circumstances of being able to grow in?
Yep. And, you know, and that's one of the things we need to consider with all the uses. Do we want to open the rest of the town for potential marijuana cultivators?
Right. That's the question.
I, I would say no.
Brian, Brian has a hard no there, but.
I know, but, but we got to at least raise it for a point of discussion. It's.
Yes. And again, this, this would be the sort of thing that you could allow as, in a residential district as a special use.
No, yeah, yeah, under certain circumstances, yes. You could even establish a district for it. I'm not, Brian, I'm, I'm not, trust me, I'm not, I'm just saying that this can be the type of thing that we might end up dealing with as a question anyways. So we should have discussed it anyways.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting started.
And keep in mind, too, this, this is the dipping the toe in the water.
Yeah.
You know, we can always go back and loosen things up. It's, it's tough to have it loose and then tighten the belt. So.
No, yeah, you would rather, I mean, the ideal circumstances is what you've presented is as close as to what's going to be final as is possible. I, I'm inclined to think it probably is, but.
And all these, all these grow facilities are industrial kind of.
Exactly. Exactly.
Very, I think, yeah, I think to, in order to be economically feasible, what you have is a kind of an industrial type facility with controlled temperature and lighting and water and all that stuff.
I'm with Brian about it being a no, but I, I just think we have to, it's an inevitable question because we have a, a population of farmers in town.
Yeah. Well, we, that will be one of the things that we'll refine as we go through this. Okay, what other general requirements have we got?
I, I did throw in under E, just some general hours. You know, I'm, I just put something in as a placeholder, whether those are the hours or not. You know, you guys can discuss and change as you feel necessary. G, I prohibited alcohol establishments from combining marijuana and alcohol. That seems to be fairly common. Again, I'm not, you know, opposed to it, but it's, it just seemed like a common theme across most of the bylaws.
And it, it's sort of by default that the vice versa is not allowed, right?
Correct. Yeah, I think, I don't know where it, uh, yeah, marijuana is prohibited from selling alcoholic beverages, which again, if you get licensed as a marijuana establishment.
Then you can't sell alcohol.
Can't sell it. So.
Yeah, I, I guess the pizza factory can't apply for a license to sell marijuana on the premise.
Uh, I.
By default.
It would lose its alcoholic license.
They'd have to pick one.
They'd have to pick one, right. Yes.
And have pot and pizza or beer and pizza. I think beer and pizza would probably go better.
Yeah, yeah.
It depends on, yeah.
Anyway.
All right. And then, so.
The, the other piece just to keep in mind, too, is these are just our local requirements. The state has extensive requirements in order to get that license, even if the select board and the town approve. So.
And this, this language has been allowed by the state and other communities. You just pull together what you think is a good shot for us, for sure.
Yes. Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I don't really know enough about marijuana to reinvent the wheel. But it seemed like these were good safeguards overall that were adopted pretty widely. So.
Okay.
Special permit. Basically, the first criteria is essentially if you have a criminal past, you don't get the special permit. And there's some, some details in there on general laws on, you know, what applies. Again, this comes from state language. I think that's good practice that we don't want the criminals dealing out a controlled substance. Security plans need to be.
Hey, Sam, can, sorry, can you go back to that one about the criminals? That it refers to nonprofit corporations. And I just didn't understand why the distinction was a nonprofit corporation. So.
Uh, so.
If they also have any dings against them, not the corporation.
Yeah, but I don't know why it's nonprofit.
Why, why any, why would it be corporations, LLCs and non?
Right. Yeah.
You got to read the next one. So A is for nonprofits, B is for profit.
Okay.
They're separated. Okay.
Which it, it was, again, it was really.
Well, A, A says nonprofit too, actually.
A and B both say nonprofit. That may be a typo.
I really don't like those nonprofits.
Definitely don't like.
Bunch of criminals.
There's a lot of area of nonprofit activity, but yeah.
I think, I think the second one was supposed to be a for-profit.
I see. Okay.
We'll flag that and take a peek.
Yeah, I can, I can make an adjustment there. But yes, one was supposed to be nonprofit, the other was supposed to be specific. Yeah, I I can, I can make an adjustment there, but yes, one was supposed to be nonprofit, the other was supposed to be specifically for-profit. Yeah, no, uh, applications, there is a list of uh requirements for the application. Uh, you know, security plans, uh, all the information of the uh responsible parties. Uh, license from the state, of course. Uh, site control plans, odor control plans. Uh, anyone who's contributing to the the operation more than ten percent. Again, that way we can determine whether or not there's any type of felony or criminal past. Uh, and then where they're getting the marijuana uh sourced from and waste disposal procedures. Uh, so along with site plan review, which would come into play, these are additional uh marijuana specific. Uh, items that I found in other. Other communities.
Hey Sam, can I give you a couple more that?
Sure.
I've seen just for food for thought, one is um like a pedestrian and vehicle access. Study and uh plan. Um, as well as uh insurance requirements, I think there are some under the state law, but you know, I would think that. They gotta give us evidence that they have the appropriate insurance in place with the application, you know?
Yep, uh, the pedestrian vehicle access might be addressed in the uh parking bylaw.
Oh.
That I put in place. Um, which I don't think would be any different for. Uh, marijuana facilities, a retail of that versus anything else, but if if you want it specifically in here, certainly we can add it.
Unless there's a compelling reason, I'm a big fan of not having redundancies.
Sure. Yeah, if it's covered elsewhere, that's fine, yeah, but I've seen it because of, you know, traffic issues at some other. Locations, I've seen it, you know, as part of these bylaws, but if it's covered elsewhere, that's fine, Sam.
Okay. Um, if, once we get to the parking bylaw, uh, cause I I really don't remember right now without looking at it, I think it's in there.
Okay, good.
Spot, uh, oh, revocations. Uh, or modification of a special permit, uh, just goes through if you um. You can change your special permit. Uh, but limits what you can do with that change of permit, uh, for change of location. Um, transfer of ownership, those types of things, and then revocation, it gives some. Uh, reasons for revoking that uh special permit. Uh, and most are pretty. Pretty straightforward, you know, you you didn't start the business within eighteen months. Uh, you transfer ownership without approval of the planning board. You, we, there's activity on site, which is, you know, they haven't worked, uh, got a required license or approval for. Exploration and termination of their license to the state. So yeah, you know, if there's any others that you want added, uh, we can certainly add them.
Do you mind if I chime in? Please. Uh, a couple I could think of is if they cease operation for a certain period of time, you know. Extended period of time, in other words, um. Yeah, sorry.
Uh, number five, uh, under A. Is the exception of operation.
Yeah, cessation, it's it's always trying, difficult to try and figure out what if somebody's actually ceased operations, but if it if it's for a certain period of time. I think they should be kinda cut and dry that, you know, that. They lose the permit. Um, another one is the failure to satisfy laws and regulations. Generally, you know, um, so I would be concerned about that as well. So if there are other, you know, requirements that they have under state laws and regulations and they aren't observing those, then um. I think that that should be considered. What's that, Rob?
I thought that was mentioned uh earlier, uh, i- i- in another section.
Um, actually above it, I don't know if this gets what you want, is expiration or termination of the applicant's registration by mass uh public health. Or the uh cannabis control commission. Or are you looking more for a local?
Sit on this stuff regularly, right? Uh, uh, you can actually go to them and get them to determine whether there's been violations or not, isn't that true?
I think they're. I think they're pretty strict still. But a- again, I'm not involved with it enough to really, really know, this is my first. First review, but I don't know if that, if that's the same as what you're looking for.
No, no, it's probably a little less.
I think it's different, but yeah.
So.
Uh, about the whole process that we're going through right now, uh, this is a first glance at it, and already we've. Uh, identified a a couple of key areas for future discussion. Uh, and of course, I would always be interested in. Having Chris uh um give us his feedback as he does every. Um, every time he sends out um his report to us. Uh, I'm presuming that we'll, what we'll do is spend the next couple of weeks. Um, highlighting uh the areas that. Uh, you know, in some way we'll collect. Comments from all of the members, um, and and Chris can. Basically start um highlighting uh or or making additional points uh. To be considered, something like that, is that where we're going tonight?
Well, let's, let's let Sam finish what he has to say, I think Chris did include a zoning bylaw from another town. That we could also take a look at and compare with this. Yeah, I think, all right, that's fine. Sam, do we have more, or is this the last?
Uh, last thing is, there's two things, uh discontinuation of use. Um, so there's requirements for uh removing materials. And um. You know, also, planning board can require an escrow uh amount, uh escrow account in the amount. Sufficient to support dismantling. And then the last section is indemnification and waiver of liability. Which essentially holds harmless the uh town or any of its officials uh from. Any violations of state or federal laws relating to uh the operation of the establishment.
Hey Sam, why, why would we make that uh, the language may? May require the escrow account. That that should be mandatory.
That's a question for the board to discuss, I mean, we, you know, we have other. Other similar. We have parallel language in other bylaws like. Uh, cell tower and other things, you know, we just have to decide how we wanna handle it.
Yep, and I I used may just cause I thought based on the size of the operation. Um, it it may not warrant it, um, you know, with it, if it's a, you know, ten by ten, like your old photo shacks. That you'd see in the parking lots. Um, and it doesn't take much to dismantle and take care of. I don't know, um. But again, I I just put may as a placeholder, but.
Well, I'm 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 glad you put the language in there, so we got a reminder to discuss this.
Yeah, we have it flagged.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, please, Brian.
Yep. Sam, uh, first of all, uh, the statement, I I really like this, I it's uh. To my heart of, you know, kind of. Short to the point and uh it 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 appears to cover. Um, thi- this, this uh. Quite well. You mentioned specifically, I wanna go back to the five hundred feet. That uh you you spoke about in terms of distance from schools or whatever. And uh. In the business district, that probably would mean nothing gets allowed. So would the state be okay with that? We just, that's the way it is, and uh. You know, this this basically means there's nothing coming to town, which probably many people would be happy with.
Um, that, that would not be legal, um, it's kinda like having the uh adult district, if you put it in. A location where. Your bylaw allows it and then prohibits it by another feature of that bylaw. Uh, it, your bylaws invalid.
Okay, but let's say it's, let's cut it in half, let's just say it was two hundred fifty feet. One of the few places in town that might be useful for this is that office building, the Winfield Crossing. Downtown. That gets rid of the businesses or whatever. And uh. You 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 know, you 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 can't. The fact that there's a preschool in the in the church that's diagonally across the way, the uh. The congregational church. I mean, we we we, you know. How 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 can we uh? You know, meet the letter of the law, may, maybe the school would disappear someday and and that that particular office building would be useful. To me, it makes sense. I like the business district idea. And if we come down. Two hundred fifty feet. That seems reasonable. Um, to me, um.
Unless, unless it precludes everything.
Well. But Sam, is that, is it required that we have it set back? We could have none, right?
No, and and that was what I was gonna say, honestly, I think the reality is we don't need it. If the kids from the place, the preschool at the church are crossing the state highway to go get marijuana, we got bigger problems.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I I understand what their intent is here, cause you know, there's a lot of communities that are your, uh, you know, drug, drug free school zones. And that starts getting into the way of that, I think that's where this is coming from. I, I don't really see with if. If it is determined that the business district is the correct location, I think I should be deleted. Because it it just. And and not only that, I don't like moving districts, um, you know, the fact that someone puts a school in or does something. Then, you know, if there's a a dispensary downtown. And someone wants to put a school in, then do we have to deny them? Uh, you know, I I I just.
That, I understand, that that's good to for us to think about, right? That that's, that's good clarity.
That will be the discussion.
The other, last, my last question. Um, we we've. What what's it been, like four, four plus years since the state has had a marijuana bylaw?
Yes.
Several shops open in Haverhill. Uh, Amesbury, Salisbury, Rowland. Probably other places I can't think of at the moment. You know, um. If if we. What 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 is our realistic exposure today? To 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 uh not having this bylaw in place.
I think, you know. From a good faith standpoint, where we are a yes community, it's something that should be in place. I think the reality is we're looking at a potential of zero to one shops. Um, if that.
The the exposure is that it could then go to someplace else within the town boundaries. And we could fight it out in court as to whether it's uh allowed under our. Our zoning or not, I mean, the 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 issue is to not have it. Leads typically, I I and Sam, you you maybe know more about this or Tim, but. But in general, uh, you want to allow for it in some manner, uh, by not commenting it at all, you have more exposure. That's my understanding.
Yeah, I believe where we're a yes community, if we have no bylaw in place. We have to look at the closest use, which would be retail sales, if it was a retail shop. And it would be allowed where we allow retail, which is the business.
It would be in the business.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't think there.
It it we, i- if that scenario took place, we wouldn't have these additional restrictions in place.
Exactly.
Right, right, I think, I think the. I think to answer Brian's question, the the greatest risk is not having a bylaw.
Right, exactly.
We can make the bylaw quite. You know. Tight and brief and to the point, but then we're covered. And in the very slight chance that something came along, we would have thoughtfully gone through this process of how we wanna craft.
There's a movement afoot. Uh, for a ballot question in the November of twenty six. To uh eliminate. Retail sales, now I I personally think that's not not gonna pass, but. There's things, crazy things out there. Uh, so.
Well, I I think the entire cannabis commission, this whole matter is kind of a moving target.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
Comply with, we we just have to comply with the regulations that are in place at the time, we. We seek to comply. And then, you know, change things, we change them.
I I don't mean to belabor this, but I, is there any chance we could lose a state grant or something if somebody were to notice that we were? You know, not living up to our responsibilities here?
I don't know what penalties there are, I I don't know of any grants or funding that's tied to this, but I I don't know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, where it's a private development, Ray, I don't think so. The government.
You know, that we don't have something on the books when we said.
Yeah.
Something on the books.
This isn't what we're talking about with green communities, so.
Yeah.
No. Okay, well, that's great. Uh, and then there are a bunch of updates from KP Law on the subject, I have to say, I kind of skimmed through them. My takeaway, I don't know, Sam, if you're up. Have you read all that stuff? It seemed to me the takeaway was. This is a moving target and we'll let you know if anything changes.
These are mostly about the equity.
That, yeah, that and the host community agreement, right?
Yeah, we, which is, which is not, which is not what we're talking about.
Right, right.
Well, again, the the equity agreement is what I had for the selectmen put together.
For the selectmen, so it's not, it's not really.
Not for the the district um compliance.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is great, Sam, thank you, you you work is always amazing, absolutely amazing.
Thanks, it's my best guess, and hon- honestly, the um. Looking at a lot of the bylaws, this is more robust than quite a few communities.
Yeah, I would expect that from you.
Uh, there was a lot out there that was um. Really lacking, and then there was a few that were, you know, uh, it's. Clearly, they they don't truly want marijuana there, cause.
Right.
But anyway.
Speaking of lacking, don't we have off-street parking to talk about with?
Well, we have a bunch of other things, but before we do that, um, it, Chris is the Newbury bylaw in here next, could you pull that up if that's? I, that came from. From Chris posting this, I don't know that you've had a chance to look at this at all, Sam. Um, have you?
Yeah, it was one of the ones I I pulled up, uh, it's it's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think probably as members, we should look at these two proposals and sort of. You know, pick and choose what makes sense to us, see how. Newberry may have handled some of the matters that came up tonight, but I think that'll be homework.
Yeah, really good thorough bylaws, probably the most thorough, if you wanna get into them, are Fitchburg and Haverhill.
Yeah, but they also had the most exposure.
Oh, exactly, but they also have some, a good legal team to to delve into adding a bunch of stuff in there that we probably don't need, so.
And they've also, they've also been through the experience enough time to probably, probably address deficiencies that.
Yeah, they may have, yeah, so I think, well, you know, we all and and Chris as well can kind of compare these and see where they. Where big differences lie, I don't think we're gonna wanna go through an entire second bylaw in real time.
Uh, and and again, my my feelings, any changes, alterations, additions, subtractions do not hurt my feelings, um. Uh, again, it's a. I just like having a bylaw in place that if I need to enforce something, I can enforce it.
Absolutely understood, these are, these are good drafts and we'll, we'll craft a a final version. Can take out and shop around to the select board and to the public before anything gets uh.
Great, thank you.
It's brought forward.
I second the appreciation, appreciation of your work here, Sam, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Parking and loading, a fascinating topic.
Absolutely.
What have we got?
Um, so parking and loading, uh, so. Right now, our bylaw. Requires adequate parking. Uh, which is. I don't like that, cause it is left up to me to determine adequate. Uh, that to me, having a moving target with no criteria is way dangerous, I don't like that. Which is why I wanted to stop putting together a parking bylaw. Uh, the purpose is pretty straightforward, again, it's, you know, I I don't need to read it to you, uh, same thing with the applicability. Uh, so getting into it, minimum and and maximum parking.
Oh, I I if if we could, I have one thing in applicability.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, uh, the the, my question is, uh, speaking of. You know, things that may lack definition. Altered. It can mean any number of things, any number of people, I, you you know, if the food mart, if the food mart wants to. Take their current front door and move it to facing uh Main Street, does that then put them in? An altered state and the parking uh.
Second sentence.
Well, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, I think this is, I think this is where Sam comes in, if they're going to seek a building permit, then he will make the call. Whether that's an alteration that requires changes, right?
So the second sentence of that is any use lawfully in operation at the time. Uh, may continue uh parking and loading configuration regardless of compliance.
Right.
So if they, if they change, if they change. Enlarge the structure, they're still operating under the old one?
No, then they would have enlarged the structure, that would be an alteration.
Yeah, so they can, they can keep what they have, but if they enlarge. Yeah, so they can, they can keep what they have, but if they enlarge or alter, uh, they would be subject to.
Alter is the word I have the trouble with. Uh.
Okay.
Alter for me. Alter is moving the front door from the the west uh wall to the south, the north wall? Is that an alteration?
Oh, we could probably, you know, lay that out better.
Yeah, I I would just caution that the word altered can be exactly where you don't wanna be, which is. Uh, it's open to too many interpretations and and it may not need to be there.
Well, gotta rely on Sam's expertise on that one.
Nope, I'll uh, I'll make a note and do some wordsmithing there to make it a little uh.
Yeah, thank you. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, there might be, yeah, it might be some sort of, and now it's getting complicated, but percentage. Significant alteration, something along.
Excuse me, excuse me just a minute, I'm sorry, Ray. Deb, if that's your dog, would you please mute?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Unless you wanna speak.
I'll mute it. No, I'm gonna mute it. Sorry about.
It's distracting.
Thank you, thank you, Sam.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I think, Ray, we're gonna leave this up to Sam cuz he's done.
And one of those things I can can link, cuz uh, the existing building code has definitions of altered. And levels of alteration. Uh, we can probably link it to something along.
Yeah, something like that. That would, that would make me feel uh better, whether you're involved or not. We haven't had building inspectors as good as you from time to time. I would love to see it linked to something that's a little clearer than what that term.
Yeah, I I don't like ambiguous.
Right, and that is ambiguous. I don't care whether anybody believes that or not. Thank you.
And then uh, minimum, obviously, that's the whole reason for this is setting up a table of minimum requirements. But also in reviewing this, I found um. A good uh reason to put in a maximum uh amount of parking. Uh, leading to especially when we get into uh stormwater management and our MS four district, so. Um, unless there's a reason uh through special permit, they can do more. But I don't see why anyone for the most part would want more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the required, but. Uh, there is a path if they do, but um, I just thought it was prudent to put that in there again with. Uh, the potential locations for where large paving may end up being. Uh, anyway.
So, um, I don't know if we wanna get into details here, Ann, but I do have questions about this.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Ray.
So, um, if you have somebody with a long driveway. You know, I mean, what what defines a parking space? You know, if you have a driveway, go right into a garage. I assume that you assume that the space in front of the garage is a parking space. Uh, this kind of stuff is kinda iffy. And then, uh, yeah, I I'm not sure that all two-bedroom. Residences need two parking spaces. And then I I can see where somebody might, I mean, it's very common, I would think, there are people that have wanna have three parking spaces in a two-bedroom home or a multi-bedroom home. But a hundred and twenty-five percent of two spaces is is two-point-five spaces.
If you scroll further down, one and two-family dwellings and accessory dwelling units are exempt.
Okay.
From the.
So six-point, three-point-four, this would be a a table of minimum?
Correct.
Yes.
So maybe the word minimum could be added to the title here.
Sure.
And then the. And then the maximum number of parking spaces for all but residential dwellings or something shall not exceed one-twenty-five, something like that?
Correct.
Let's see, what's the footnote actually say?
Yeah, somewhere in here.
Yeah, where is it? I need to link it as a footnote with some kinda. Thing. There it is.
Oh, uh, it it actually goes in the layout, and again, I can make it as a footnote, but in layout, it talks about the provisions of six-point, three-point-six not applying to. Uh, detached, single-family or two-family dwellings. Um, so the concerns about driveways, no storage, all that comes out of it. Um, I can make that a footnote in the table.
Yeah, refer to it somehow.
Just if it jumps to my mind, it may.
Right, of course.
To other people's minds in the future.
Yep.
And and maybe just adding, you know, something like for. Other than for one and two-family dwellings, the maximum number of parking spaces, just a little language there so people aren't hunting around for it.
That's true, too.
Right, right.
Up at the, up at the very beginning. Yeah.
But I do, I do, I do like the idea that that you're setting a limit on maximum number of spaces.
Yeah, and and that's authorized by special permit.
Yeah.
Which is great.
Flexible.
Right, uh, uh, and and it's flexible but still in control. I just have to ask. Um, how do you get a dwelling that has fewer? Than one bedroom? Does such a thing?
Studio. Uh, we're seeing studio apartments.
Okay, great.
And then.
I just, I just needed to understand that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
In your, in your table, uh, residential, other than one and two-family, uh, do apartment buildings go there, apartment?
Uh, apartments.
You've got boarding house. I'm just wondering if, uh, yeah, down there, exactly.
Multi-family, yeah. Yes.
Okay, so multifamily dwellings is that's the same as an apartment building?
Uh, anything three-plus units, yeah.
Right, right.
Yes.
And so just to give you an idea on this, I took the the bold uh titles are out of the use codes for the building code. And the items under are what we actually currently allow in our zoning in the way it's worded. Which points out to a certain degree what we're lacking or missing. So as we change or alter our use table. We probably want to also at that time amend the parking table. But until then, I figured it was was reasonable, you know, if if we just call it a multifamily versus an apartment building.
I, yeah, I question offhand, I mean, two spaces per unit. Um, strikes me that, you know, if you had a big one, one-point-five spaces per unit would be a better number, but I I don't know.
And all these numbers are subject to whatever you guys want. I just took took common numbers from from bylaws.
Right.
So if you want one per unit, that's fine. If you want twenty per unit, that's fine.
Well, there's also, this allows for things, requirements to be reduced by special permit, correct?
I believe so.
Any parking requirements set forth in this bylaw may be reduced by special permit.
Right, you have to make, you could make the case.
Oh, you can make the case, yeah, so that's.
Yeah, but we're multifamily building of all studios, you might make.
Well, to Ray's, Ray's point, I think Ray raised that when you, the larger the residential uh building. The more likely you don't need one car per bedroom. Uh, they they generally go to about one and a half. If you if you get like a sixty-unit. Uh, 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 place, then you don't need two per unit. You need like one and a half, they found out, that's for some reason.
Yes.
Anyway, so having the ability to go there might might prove prominent in the future.
Also, I imagine, I'm, you know, I'm not a developer, but I imagine that uh. This, this becomes onerous to to have the acreage you need for parking if you're dealing with a big building.
Absolutely. And I think again, through uh special permit procedure, uh, which would, in that that case, probably be your site plan review, you could combine it.
Right.
And have those discussions of, you know, minimum of two is required. But in this case, it makes more sense, not only, you know, for the the development itself, but again, for just pervious. Surface, stormwater, all that type of stuff, there's, you know, good reason.
Having it here is great, Sam, and like you said, we can tweak these numbers.
Right.
We we can play with this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the, beyond the um. Uh, the table is shared parking facilities.
Uh, if I could, one last question.
Sure, sure.
Um. So, under assembly, you have libraries, one space per four-hundred square foot of floor area. If the library does an expansion, um, what 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 position are we? Putting them in with known uh parking limitations?
No, same, same thing. If they were doing the expansion, uh, they would most likely be looking at potentially either site plan review. If not that. Then they could come before the board for a special permit for a reduction.
Okay.
And again, the reductions are based on, you know, site constraints, things like that, that just, you know. If you can't make it happen, you can't make it happen.
Yeah, okay, got it, got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I tried to leave that a little bit open as well. Uh, just so that, you know, I I hate being, again, too open, but the same thing, so special permits, it's um. You know, modifications for compact cars, you potentially could do, uh, you know, age, you know, your demographic reduction, unique features. Uh, that makes uh makes the standard measures, uh, you know, in a, in a, in applicable. Um, so in that case, with a library, you you know, because of the the limitations on it. It it is what it is. I think, you know, it's. It's really there for, again, those you, uh, pre-existing. Uh, businesses we have in town, the pizza shop downtown, things like that, that, you know, you have very limited parking. The uh, the quilt shop. Um, adequate parking down there was none. Uh, they only have on-street parking cuz they, the building takes up the entire lot.
Right.
Uh, moving forward with this bylaw, they would have to go before the board for a special permit, rather than me going, oh, well, you know, there's nowhere to park, so I guess there's nowhere to park. Uh, you know.
Got it, got it.
But at least then there's something where it's a board decision, not just me shrugging my shoulders going, oh, well, you know, uh.
Right.
Park on the street, so. Uh, shared parking is really for um. Multi-businesses that might have uh different uses. We got a good example now in Groveland. We had a restaurant move into a plaza. The rest of the plaza is open during the day. They shut down, the restaurant opens at night. Uh, so although from a calculated standpoint, they don't have enough parking. When you take the uh shared parking into it where everyone else is closed, plus there's some on-street. And there's a municipal lot within X amount of feet of that business that's not used during that nighttime. Uh, we deemed that it was adequate parking. Um.
I mean, I think what we're finding in all of this is that many of these are site-specific, situation-specific. That's why we need to just look at them individually as they come up.
Yeah, yeah, and I just, you know, with this, it was more giving some guidance for anyone looking to do something to say, yes, we're open to. If you've got a reasonable solution for parking, um, you know, let's hear it. Uh, cuz I don't wanna, we're. West Newbury is very similar to Groveland in that their downtown is cramped and limited to pretty much what it is.
Right.
Uh, so when we change a business, if there's even a slight uptick in parking requirements, it's difficult, so. Um, and then location and layout. Uh, this I took mostly from. That nineteen-eighty-two document that you've been using with some. Additions for certain things, um. The only thing that I I I don't even, I don't really understand was in G, the number of tiers. I I don't get what that is.
Where does it say that?
Uh, G in that table.
Oh.
Uh, each side of aisle. I I looked at it, I I don't, I kept it in there cuz I didn't understand it and didn't know if you did and wanted to keep it. Um, I just don't get.
I don't know what that means either.
I think in 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 uh, in managed parking facilities in cities. You can have cars parked too deep. That'd be two tiers on each side of an aisle.
Oh, okay.
The other thing from my experience, which is by no means, uh. Well, anyway, uh, twenty feet is a bit long, and I, uh, eighteen feet is uh, is a more standard length of parking.
Yep, and that, that's fine. I put the larger size in there cuz why not, but um. Uh, partly because we have a provision for compact cars. Uh, but uh, again, I'm not opposed to a, you know, nine-by-eighteen. Spot, you know, uh, I think again, with limited space, that may be somewhere to go, something Chris did bring up. Uh, as well, so.
Oh, is that right?
Yep, yep, so if eighteen is better than.
Yeah, let's do that.
Go eighteen.
Can we just eliminate that whole tier stuff since?
I would like to. I I don't.
I think so.
I I don't think we'll ever.
If I were laying out parking, I wouldn't know what that meant.
Yeah, okay.
Aisle width and and angle is the only applicable criterion for design.
Yeah, I just, I didn't understand what it was, but Ray's explanation's good. I don't think we're probably gonna be subject to that level of parking, but.
Not unless they're gonna build another Fenway Park here.
That'd be fantastic, you know. I think, where where's that gonna be right?
By the way, if if we change the uh to eighteen, nine-by-eighteen, then the square footage per space that's mentioned in other places, um.
Yes.
Could be changed from a hundred and eighty to uh one-seventy-two, I think, whatever.
I think we should mess with them and just leave the the two that they gotta meet both.
Oh, okay, alright.
Um, what else do we got? I lost my place.
I love the shade tree requirement. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Uh, an exception could be made where, and I don't think we'd ever see it, but where they put solar panels above uh parking.
Right, the shade moves.
But I I think that would be, that could be a special permit thing anyway.
Yeah.
I think it would be, yeah.
Um, so loading areas, um. Isn't really anything too exciting. I gave a, you know, what it is, what uh, how many bays are required, the requirement to not impact. You know, off uh, off-lot parking. Uh, I gave a dimension, again, it it's. There's, I I went with the larger of dimensions, some are a little bit shorter. And then again, screening uh from neighboring with either fencing or plantings.
If if you've got a a commercial facility of zero to nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet. They're they're not required to have one, loading area?
We can, um, I think if that, you know. I I'm trying to think of what that would be, where you would need. Really that type of pallet jack setup?
I'm just, I'm just. Where I I would add it to table six-point, three-point-seven. Just let less than nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine, zero bays required or something.
Okay, so just an indicator that it's not required.
It's not required, yeah, I suppose. I mean, they have kind of many little bays at the post office, but that's not this kind of loading bay, that's.
Uh, I would say typically, those size establishments aren't getting your full tractor trailer. It's more your.
Yeah, the the place to look to see how that might really be in real life is the food mart. They're. They're the ones that get the tractor-trailer deliveries. They're the ones that have trucks actually taking up part of the parking lot at time. I don't know what their. Gross floor area is, but I I would guess it's under twenty thousand.
I think it's still under, just.
I think it's still under, so it doesn't affect them, but but that's, that's your breaking point right there, cuz I I will tell you that at times they. They they have stuff going on in there that's contrary to good parking.
And somehow it all works.
And somehow it works and no one's been killed, yep.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, finally, special permit, we talked about that, basically, uh, the planning board is the ultimate authority that can find. Uh, reasons for reductions for for good cause.
Yep.
Right.
So again, you know.
The only thing, and I'd ask Tim, uh. Examples of circumstances that may warrant such reduction include, but are not limited to?
Where is that?
Yeah, number A.
Point eight, A.
A?
Nope, I can add that.
Okay, yeah, that's pretty typical.
Yeah.
Cool, that's good, Ray.
Yeah, that's good addition.
So I I would say again, and um, if everyone gets comments to. Probably Chris, and we can work together to do a red line, change whatever you feel needs changing and uh. Just keep on, keep on keeping on.
So what would be the timeframe of that?
I gotta say, I I I love this if, because I think. You know, it makes your job easier, but I also think it's, it's just, it's just good to be proactive about these things. I mean, I'm not picturing. Any big thing coming into West Newbury, but someday something will.
Yep.
Maybe there'll be a big grow facility of, you know.
But like Sam says, he, he deals with these questions all the time without having concrete answers, so. In part, we're getting this stuff in place so that, that Sam can hang his hat on some stuff.
Yeah, this, this just makes my job easier, which is why I've always been involved myself with, with zoning, because. If I gotta enforce it, and it's not enforceable or poor, uh, I'm stuck with it, so.
Yeah, this is good, all right, thank you very much.
Sure, and then, uh, was there anything else with me?
Um, do you have anything, uh, the, all these things pending from the state, the, uh, battery energy store. Waiting for them to decide, right?
We did get our bylaw back, it is approved with the same language I got in Groveland, which I expected, which was. Cautionary that although it's all legal, if the board uses it to try to prevent it or be prohibitive. We could be called on the carpet. Uh, one of the things that's coming up, that I know the state's currently working on, is. Uh, some more, or I guess, some loosening of the, uh. I, I guess, requirements for large battery storage systems, knowing that that. Is the key to making the electrification of the state work.
Right.
So, yes, there's going to be some upcoming, um, requirements that we may have to amend our large battery. Uh, bylaw, but currently, it is legal and it did pass, and again, I, at that, I'm. Very excited about that, cause I really packed everything in there that I could to put it on the table for us to consider.
Yes.
Um, and yes, to the point where the AG said, man, you know, you're walking a line, uh, which I like, uh, so.
That's good.
And I think that's why, you know, they got, uh, we had that additional pause, because even though my last one passed, this one. I'm sure they were looking ahead to what's coming, but without, without anything in place, nothing. You know, firm yet, uh, I think they had no choice but to move it forward, so.
Okay, so, so the summary of that is, we have, uh. We've limited the town's exposure because we have a legal law in place, we've made Sam's role and job clearer and easier. And we should expect that we may, as soon as spring, be going in there with amendments.
Yes.
Para-characterization.
Yeah, cause I, I'm guessing they're gonna make some amendments that are gonna make portions of our bylaw no longer legal.
Right.
Uh, which is fine, I mean, if, if that's an easy sell at town meeting, if we have to strike a section, we.
I, I, I like being ahead of the state on these things.
Me too, me too.
Right, so we're in, we're in good shape there, and if we need to do something, we know what to do. Okay, great, that's wonderful. Thank you very much, uh, wireless, same thing, we're just waiting for state guidance, right?
Yes, yeah, so our current bylaw is, I think, needed some tweaking, um. But I, I, I'm not real familiar with that, I touched base briefly with Angus, and I said, is there new. Regulations coming, he said, no, 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 that's just our current bylaw, there was some, something that needs to be done, and Town Council had it, so I don't know if Chris.
Okay, so that's a.
Knows more than I do, but I, I know nothing on that one, really, and same with stormwater, I, I've kept myself out of. As best I can, cause I don't need any more. Uh, thankfully, Paul took that as the enforcement, uh, piece.
Right, okay, great, all right, so you've done what you needed to do.
Cool.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, we'll, we'll, uh, be collecting our feedback, and then, once we figure out when. We have something to show you, we will, Chris will get in touch with you.
Sounds good, awesome, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you very much, Sam, appreciate your time. All right, uh, Chris, before we leave zoning, can we just confirm with you that. The Town Council is on top of wireless stuff, and what's the update on, on wireless and stormwater?
That's what I've been told.
Okay, and how about on stormwater?
Uh, we'll have to reschedule with Laurie for. Uh, December second is the plan at this point.
Okay, so she'll be ready for that, and you and Paul Sevigny are, what, what are you and Paul doing? No. Do you?
Uh, I've been told to schedule a meeting with Paul and Laurie, to go over what she'll report on. On December second, so we're trying to put that together.
Okay, so in the next two weeks, you guys will put your heads together, and then we'll have her on the second, okay, good, thank you. All right, number two, visioning scope of work, this is back to you, Chris, again.
Yeah, all I did is, uh, I took the draft and, uh, made some changes from the last meeting. And you saw those in your staff report, which I don't have a link for here, but, um, the next meeting, which we talked about. I'll have the firm dubbed version, and that'll be in the packets, available for public consumption. And that'll be, um, what, at, at this point, as far as I'm aware, uh, will be a complete version that will be able to. Be, uh, advertised to the marketplace, so. Um, I've incorporated all your input from the last meeting, and, um. That's where we, we are with that, um, it's pretty much. December second will be the final review, and then we're gonna put it on the street.
Okay, um, I guess the only comment I really had is that. It's a very long scope. And I understand that it, and, and yet, that long scope still is for the visioning portion. But I, I just wonder if there needs to be a little bit more kind of in the fr- front end. That makes that clear, that this is just for visioning, because, I don't know, it almost sounds like it's for the, a whole master plan, I, did other people have that? Sense, or is that just me? Oh, very quiet, must've just been me.
We didn't read it closely, as you did.
No, I, I'm willing to stand down if everybody else thought it was fine. Deafening silence, okay, well, I guess, Chris, you can carry on, anybody have any other comments? No? Hearing none, all right, well, we'll look for the final version on December second, then, that was easy. Um, then, comprehensive plan committee membership.
So, the final version's gonna be a really important thing, um, is there a chance that we can see it, uh, sometime later this month? So we can review it ahead of, of the meeting?
Sure, yeah, sure.
I, I just like getting things sooner than later, that's all.
Well, I mean, typically, it would be in the packet, which would be. Yeah, it's just the one weekend before.
Right, so, I, I'm hoping maybe, you know, the beginning of the week, that week, maybe, uh, uh, ahead of the packet.
Okay, Chris, is that possible?
Sure, it's pretty much done, so.
Yeah.
Next, um. Like Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
Will be a week from today, the twenty-fifth, all right, watch your inbox on eleven twenty-five, all right, that's good.
Better Thanksgiving.
Indeed. You can read it while you're stuffing a turkey.
While I'm carving, yeah.
Let me be thankful for.
Okay, yes.
We're thankful for you, Chris.
Hard fought around here, um, okay, so, is that, is that all on that?
Yes, we're on to item number three.
So here, there's a couple items in your packet, um, they're examples of. Master Plan Implementation Committee charges in different communities, they're, they've been widely distributed. Because they're considered best practices and well-received, but, um. Implementation is, is not what we're looking for at this point, we're looking for a Master Plan Steering Committee, or a Master Plan. Committee charge, but what I, um, what I'm doing here is trying to emphasize continuity, and so. Uh, these two committees, while distinct and, and separate, um, should be roughly the same. So I've given you examples of implementation committees that are taking a, an adopted master plan. And proceeding forth to implement it, um, and, and trying to get you to think of. The Master Plan Committee that produces a master plan has the same essential function. So that would be my recommendation, I've had, I've seen lots of places that had a best plan steering committee. They adopted a plan, they had nothing to implement it, and it just died on the vine.
Gotcha.
So, that's, that's why I put in an implementation committee charge, but. You can see the basic structure that would be in, in either that or steering committee.
Right.
Do you wanna open up one of those to take a look at, in case we have specific, so we can hang our, hang our comments on something.
Turn my highlighter off.
Well, one of the things I've noticed in.
Yep.
Both of these, is you've got, uh, Select Board in one, but not in the other, I think, um, Planning Board, Concom. Historical Commission, that'll make sense to me. And then, a number of residents at large, um, on this one, it's just one here, but on the other one, I think they had three.
Okay, yep.
And, uh, yeah.
This is a charge, and here you would just swap out implementation for.
Right.
The, you know, production. So, um, I can, if, if all this makes sense to you, I can take one of these charges and make a draft, and again, I'll get it out earlier. Rather than later, and like next Tuesday, and, um, you'll have time for the December second meeting to. Review it, and then vote to adopt it, that would be the action.
Do you want to very quickly discuss who should be on it?
Yeah, so that's tonight's, uh, what we talked about at the last meeting, tonight's discussion, and the action item for tonight is the board deciding. Who should be on it, the membership.
And I would just throw out, to begin with, Planning Board, Select Board, Concom. I think Parks and Rec makes sense, I think open space makes sense. I think Historical Commission, I mean, I don't know how active they are.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that may be less of a concern in this town, you know, compared to some with enormous historic districts and stuff.
Right.
Um, but what are the other sort of topics, let me look, take a look at that.
Right, right, go back to.
Economic development.
Yep.
So who's looking at housing? Should that be the Housing Authority, perhaps? Or affordable housing, those are both very limited housing, we need a bigger housing tent.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Maybe that will be a Planning Board member who will have to take that one.
Well, you know, also, you could be looking at individuals who might have, uh, certain areas of expertise, so for instance. You know, they don't all have to be coming from, uh, a formal committee, but someone like Wendy Reed, for instance, might be very good in housing. Someone like Ross Capalupo might be very good on economic.
Well, and I think, if you've got a broad enough, a group of, of people here, I think you're gonna be able to address topics. Like you say, Rob, they're, they're not.
Across, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, so I, 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 there's a certain amount of. A, a committee must be representative, and I like the ones that Ray mentioned, I think open space has to be. I think, uh, rec, park and recreation, uh, has to be, but there's also a certain element of. You need some individuals that can work cross between all of them, and, and have a broad. Because what Chris is getting at, uh, this is the most important part of, well, not the most important, so besides the consultant we hire. And, and the civilians that we are able to involve, the civic, uh, people that we're able to involve, implementation. Uh, can become, uh, problematic if not followed up, so, so I like the idea of, of. N- not just the boards that have been mentioned, but, but reaching down into the people that. Might be the most effective people to, to carry some of these things through to fruition.
Well, let's, let's run on two tracks here, both the, the boards and committees, and, and, and then. I think are characterized typically as, you know, sort of other community members, but taking what one or two of you already said. Maybe the one thought is that a Planning Board member and a Select Board member. Will have a less specific charge, say, than Concom or Parks and Rec, but those will be the kinds of people that will really cross a bunch of boundaries.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have quite the Venn diagram here, and there'll be lots of overlap.
Yeah, lots of overlap, so, so we need to get, so it, I guess here's a question for Chris. Would each, say, we've got maybe eight already or so, would each of those people head up a, another, like a subcommittee? Would they then get together during the whole long process with other people around that interest?
That's what Rob mentioned.
That's what we did last time.
Last one, and I would say two of those things can be true. Uh, you can have a Master Plan Steering Committee, and their essential function is to generate public interest and support. To back the project and be involved.
Okay.
Um, and, but that is during sort of the, the early stages, like the visioning stage, and, um. When you get into the meat and potatoes.
Yes.
Of actually producing the plan, the goals and the recommendations and the action items. That is when you do what Rob had mentioned, I mean, it's quite effect, it's the most effective way to get a master plan over the goal line. Is to, to break out into subcommittees and have people tackle individual elements that they're, they specialize.
Yeah, or they're passionate about, yeah.
And, and all this supports the idea of having, uh, th- three members, three citizens at large. Because I, I like the, because they're, they're people who have passion and expertise that aren't formally on some of these other.
Well, the, 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 that might go more towards what Chris just talked about.
Subcommittees?
Yeah, subcommittees, I, I will tell you that, that the implementation's gonna have to bu- have buy-in from. You know, a, a lot of the, uh, people who operate the town government i- in the end.
Well, yeah, but, but I'm saying, you know, we, I, we mentioned these, these, the Planning Board, Select Board, Concom. Uh, Parks and Rec, Open Space, these are specific people, but, but then also having. Slots for citizens at large, where, for, in both the creation of the master plan, and later on in the implementation. I like that idea, cause you can have people out there that are interested in, in participating in the town, that haven't actually. Yet become a member of any particular committee.
Yeah, I, I think.
Idealistic here, I don't know.
I think there's some value in that, Ray, in, in terms of inclusivity. Now, not everyone wants to be in a board or committee, but that doesn't mean they don't have interest in town matters.
The last time we went through, um, i- 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 yeah, so it, it's, it's, it's possible, y- y- you may find yourself. Um, uh, that could be successful, you, you just be aware that, uh, it may not. Most of the people that are really passionate about this stuff are active in some manner anyways, right now.
I think that the thing, uh, that we need to let people know when we ask them about participating in this is that. Just as Chris said, this is a soup to nuts, sort of commitment that they're making, we wanna know their, you know, high-level thoughts now, their thirty-thousand. Foot picture, and then we want them to help form subcommittees.
Actually do a lot of work.
Interest groups and affinities and so forth, and then we want them to be involved in implementation, so this is going to be, uh.
It's a long process.
A long process.
Chris, how, 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 how long, uh, start to finish, I, you know, I know the last one took us three years, but that's cause we. Had to fire someone mid-stream, um, what, what's the timeframe overall for all, uh, start to finish?
A community of this size, um, assuming everything goes as planned, getting out of the blocks. Uh, probably about a year and a half to two years.
Thank you, yes, I agree.
Um, and here's, here's the thing. I have seen this process, this type of project be successful. When a good master plan steering committee is identified, and, and they take the reins and they run. I've seen them fail and die on the vine when, if they sort of lose interest, they stop showing up. And then things, no matter how much the consultant throws bells and whistles at it. Uh, it, it flounders.
Yeah, so.
Excited, engaged people on that master plan committee is upfront.
Absolutely. Okay.
And then you got one and a half years, this is reasonable.
And that's pre-implementation.
Yes.
Right.
You're, you, it's up to you, but your, your timeframe for implementation is a ten to fifteen-year plan?
Right, right, it's infinity, it's infinity.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you're planning for a long, for.
Yeah, yeah. Look, look at paid school, for instance, how long is paid school gonna take to accomplish, it's a decade out, you know, so.
Yeah, what I'd say is, um, and I, and I give this pitch to all my communities, and, you know, and all of them just about have. Been involved in updating their master plan, um, this is not meant to be. This is not meant to be a one and done thing for ten to fifteen years. It's meant to be a living document that is revisited. You know, let's say every two years by only, by, by the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And so that's why you want people that are in it for the long haul. And, and I've seen that done really effectively by as little as two people in Lincoln. It's a similar sized community West Newbury. These were two tenacious guys that showed up quarterly to all the Land Use Boards, Committees and Commissions meetings. And said, how are you doing on your implementation of the master plan? But that, that's, you know, sort of a religious level of fervor. I would, you know, you wanna make this easy for people to stay involved. And, and we certainly can do that, but yeah, you're thinking revisiting it, tweaking it. It should not just be a tone that sits on a shelf and say, let's crack that thing open every ten years and see where it is. That's, that's, that's my take one.
Thank you.
And we've never had one in West Newbury?
No, we have.
We have, we did.
It, it's been what Chris just described. It's pretty, you know, in a lot of ways that our previous master plan has sort of sat on the shelf, at least that's.
Okay, so the Planning Board actually put it to great use. And reacted very well towards the last master plan. And there are those of us that participated who have tried to carry forward as much as we can. But, you know, Chris's, you know, you know, outline of what we need to do is really good. I, I, I think the success of the last master plan was, we did very good visioning, we got a lot of engagement. And it excited a certain component of, of the town. But it wasn't as broad based as it needed to be and ended up not having much support. Out of subsequent select boards who, who basically poo-pooed it.
I know we, we've, we've cracked it open and had a good look at it now and then, but it, it hasn't been the sort of regular.
Hasn't been attended to.
No, no, I think that's right. I think that's right. On the other hand, I do, I think if we were to look at it, we would find that a lot of the things in it. Did get adopted, you know, parsed, parceled out to different boards and committees. And I think, for instance, Space and Recreation, and, you know, kind of was born out of the master plan.
One of the, one of the highlights of the last master plan, I, I just wanted to mention this to Deb was.
Yeah.
We had a visioning at your function hall at the church on a Saturday. Very, very well attended, very successful. The visioning can be one of the great jump starts to community involvement. People get, a well-done visioning can really excite people. And, and, and make them feel that they have some say in, in how the, the town is gonna go forward. So I look forward to the visioning.
Good. So are we gonna try to identify the, the interest groups tonight? Or are we gonna try to name actual people?
Well, I'm inclined toward actual people.
Name people, 'cause I know you.
Because it's like hiring an employee. I mean, like Chris says, you, you need the people that are gonna put the organ water and, and move us forward.
Right, you've gotta ask the right people.
Well, I think first we have to decide the, the source groups, right?
Yeah, which groups, yeah.
Well, we've had a good run at it. You just named eight of them, right?
Yeah, but, but we didn't like actually say, okay, that's, that's what it is.
Right, but.
So let's, let's go, let's go through them. I think Planning Board is obviously on the list.
Planning Board, Select Board, Concom, Parks and Rec, Open Space. Those are the ones that I.
I'm wondering about health.
Board of Health, yeah.
Well, what would you?
What would they be doing?
Well, yeah, I don't know about that. I don't know about that. I don't know where I see them. They're a pretty cut and dried regulatory group, as far as I'm concerned.
Do we have anybody, do we have any groups on resiliency and sustainability?
Yes, we do. We have a sustainability crew. What are they called? I forget, they've changed their name.
I thought it was resiliency.
It used to be energy something, but I think they're more of resiliency. I think that's an important one. Given all the concerns over energy use and river road problems and all that stuff.
Well, that's, it has a lot to do with stormwater and the Board of Health's control of that right now.
I know, but there is this other group, what are they called? You know, Chip Wallace and Rick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's just call it resiliency.
I think it's, isn't it silly, energy and resiliency?
Energy and resiliency, I think that's what it's called. Yep, I think they should be in there.
E and R.
I, I definitely agree.
I also wonder if the DPW should be there in sort of the services, facilities. I don't know, what do you think? Just saying.
Well, I, I'm assuming that Angus would be somewhat involved, right?
Well, I don't know, what would his, what would he, I don't think he really.
I'm just trying to think of the, the broader.
No, I, I don't think so.
I, I think it would be great to involve DPW. They're very, very active in this town. They fulfill a lot of needs. They, they know a lot of things. They're, they're like the canary in the gold, uh, coal mine to me. They, they know a lot of stuff and they're untapped. We should take advantage of it.
I'm sure that they would offer a good reality check, too.
Exactly, and we will see later on, we have a, there's a document about, from the town about rail, whatever it's called. DPW has a huge role in that, and it overlaps with a lot of other things, like our easements and open space. And so I think DPW is an important one.
So, one thing to remember, I think, is all of this stuff leads to activities in the town. Which end up falling back on the town employees. And, and to bring up something, or all we brought up, Board of Health may seem to. Just not, I, I mean, I, I think that Paul Savigny as a member would be very good.
I would think he does, would, just in terms of his energy level, frankly. You know.
I'm not so sure that they, they also aren't similar a little bit to DPW. That, that now we're talking about, you know, people that have a fairly large, they, they have a very good knowledge of the town.
Brian Richard might wanna be on that list, too.
Oh, yeah. Well, maybe he would be the DP, does he, is he technically with DPW?
Well, he's, that, that, his role, I think, is that he's the town buildings, facilities supervisor.
Yeah, but.
And, and it is part of the DPW, but he's supposed to deal with structure.
Caution here, though, that, you know, I don't think we can sit here tonight and volunteer people.
Just, we're just banding names around.
Yeah, we, we, we can't conscript, conscript anybody.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, Chris, go ahead.
If I can throw you to the board, the three remaining elements I have are schools, housing and economic development. I think everything else has been identified, so we can agree to that. And we have a, a master plan committee, I think.
So, what was the third one?
Economic development.
Economic development is a required element of.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I heard that one. Well, you said three. Well, I got schools, I got economic development.
I think, I think for housing, you have to rely on, on.
Planning Board and Select Board, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you get Wendy in there, you're covered on housing.
I suspect Wendy would want to be involved.
I would hope so.
And then he got school, a school.
We had listed schools with services, schools and facilities. But if we're thinking of the schools as land and buildings and so forth.
Right.
I think that might fall under the facilities umbrella, the sort of DPW slash Brian, whoever it is. Does that make sense?
No, 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 no. Schools, schools would be someone like the fellow who made the presentation. At Page School about the page, renovation versus new project. I forget his name, he's.
But he's, is he the school district? No, 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 no. Are you talking about someone who works for the school district?
Exactly, that, 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 he's the one that, so the, the problem is, the steering committee probably wouldn't be, would need someone like that. To work with them, but I doubt that he could represent the schools on the steering committee.
Why not?
Oh, 'cause he's probably not a resident.
So.
Town employees are not residents.
Yeah. DPW, I think Bri- Brian and Butch, but whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know much about it, but would somebody stand up from the school board?
I don't know.
Somebody like Nancy Wile, who was a former school board member, or?
Uh, would this be, would this be the sort of thing where you're sort of targeting people to fill a citizen at large?
Well, usually it's, if I may, Madam Chair, usually it's a, a recommendation from a board committee or commission. To appoint someone from who's interested in participating.
Right, to, to that's the, the particular board. But, but again, you know, we're also trying to craft it so that, that perhaps more than one member of the select board. Does in fact sit on the steering committee, because they have some interest outside of just being a select board member.
Let me go back to these unfilled spots. I think I'm getting a little bit hung up, because in our line items, we had put together services, schools and facilities. But it sounds to me now that we're pulling schools into its own category. Is that fair?
We had discussed that at the last meeting, yeah.
Okay. So if we say facilities, it's gonna be some DPW.
Right.
Signee, then we, then schools, we don't know who that'll be, but it'll be somebody from schools that needs some fleshing out. What did we say about, I mean, they don't have to just be these categories. Did we want to have, did we think Board of Health would be a good addition? It sounds like people did think that. I think we're up to about ten people if we do that. But maybe not. Maybe I've got the list.
That's typical size of a committee.
We're gonna have to be fluid with this anyways. You, you know, you, you may have some people begging off, so.
Okay, so I wish we had like a whiteboard or something. What's, what's the list at this point? Chris, do you?
Planning Board, two select board members if, if able.
If we're able.
Concom, Board of Health, Parks and Recs, Open Space, Energy and Resilience, DPW, Facilities, Schools. And Economic Development.
Well, I, I would suggest here, and it's just a suggestion, that you'd be one select board member. But then you have a number of citizens at large, and that's where you try to put in your second select board member.
Yeah, right.
So three citizens at large?
Well, that, that was one of, so one of your two examples had one citizen at large, and then the other.
That's not enough, generally.
Yeah.
And then, and then the other one was, had three.
I think three is, because you're gonna get a diversity, if you get the right people, you get a mu- get a better diversity of.
If you get the right people.
Yeah. So what does that make? How, how many is that if we had three at large? Or what plus three? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Nine?
Twelve.
Nine plus three?
Nine plus three. That's, that's a good size.
No.
And then.
Some people won't be able to make meeting, you need, you need a quorum, because people, a lot, you'll find a lot of people can't make a particular meeting.
Colhasset also said Planning Director ex officio.
Yes, I think that's right, because Chris is gonna be the contact person for the consultant, so that's critical that he's.
Yeah, so, so one of the things is, you know, we may, we may get less, less enthusiasm than we think from everybody. But, but two larger committees is also a problem. So I'm not so sure we should be talking about twelve.
The only thing I would say to that is it makes it easier to form nice subcommittees.
You can get the, people can be involved in subcommittees and not be on the steering committee.
That's fine.
In fact, that, that should be the, 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 the thing we should be, we should get past this question. And, and, and then the next thing that we'll be confronting is how to get people involved on the subcommittees. And I think that's what the visioning we hope will produce. But I, I wouldn't wanna go past nine.
Let, let me.
Including Chris, including Chris.
Yeah, let, let me ask, what, why do you have facilities and DPW?
I don't. No, I would, I would just have facilities. I would, DPW, I would.
I'm not even sure you need facilities.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I would, I would wrap that into DPW. I think they're.
Exactly.
Facilities is a required element in a certified.
It's an element, but we shouldn't be confusing that element with the fact that we have a facilities manager. The facilities manager we have takes care of certain stuff. But, but I'm not, not really clear that, that when we go to the, do the master plan, it's gonna rely on that person.
There's no statutory requirement about who must be on a master plan committee, so it's the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, right, there is no requirement. The steering committee should be the thing that's gonna produce the best work.
Right.
I, I don't think we need to get too hung up on the term. I think.
Right.
Somebody from the DPW, whether it's.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or a staff member that.
Yep.
Or whatever.
Caitlin, could be Butch, whatever.
But, but I think some presence of DPW. Brian, would you agree? Or not?
I'm not, frankly, if you're looking to cut down, what do they bring into the table for the?
Well, I guess they're just bringing knowledge of roads and trails and.
What, so we got, you got trails covered with open space?
They are the ones that deal with all of this stuff.
What stuff?
Let's let Brian ask his question.
Yeah, I mean, what, just, I, you, Rob, you were just talking a minute ago about trying to cut the committee down, and I'm saying, what, what? I like the guy, but what are they gonna bring to the table?
Well, one thing is that the future of schools is sort of up in the air at this point. And I think it's really important that it, that you have somebody who is tuned into, whether we're gonna build a new school.
Brian Richards is not the guy for that.
No, he's a, he's not a decision maker.
No, I'm not, I'm not think, I'm, I'm thinking that, that if someone were to come, it would be someone who's been dealing with. The various aspects of, of Middle Street Bridge and, and River Road. And i- items like that, and I.
Yeah, a required element is transportation, so that would be the DPW in general.
So there's, there's some benefits to having them, because I can tell you, a lot of these people are packing really good knowledge.
Yeah.
Practical, boots-on-the-ground knowledge.
Well, let me make another comment then in terms of trying to streamline this a little bit. Conservation Commission, there's, there's some overlap, it seems to me, with Conservation Commission, Open Space. And even Park and Rec and the energy and resiliency, are they overlapping? I, I, you know what I mean, that we're kind of, I, I feel like we have a lot of different subsets of the outdoors, if you will. And I don't really know how to narrow that down. What do you think, Ray?
So, I'm sympathetic to Rob's concern about too many members on the committee. But offhand, it would be my vote to have these committee members and not to pare it down too much. I, I see, for example, Open Space and Parks and Rec, they live in, their concerns are, are quite distinct.
Different, yeah.
There, there is, there is overlap there, and same thing with Concom.
There, there should be overlap.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that, you know, and of course, it depends on who ends up coming. But I think Concom has a great view, they see things differently than Open Space and Parks and Rec as well. So, although I'm sympathetic to, to, to Rob's hunch here, and I respect his experience in putting these master plans together a great deal. But offhand, I think these are good people to have.
Right, so going to Brian's point, if I could, one of the ways to handle this, though, is we could also consider. Some people as being key towards the membership in the subcommittees.
Absolutely.
So for instance, as, and this goes to your point, Brian. So I, I, I would, I would think that on certain of these subcommittees, maybe that's the time. Where we get some of this boots-on-the-ground knowledge that Butchy has, Caitlin has, that Paul has. And maybe we were better off starting off with the, the core of Planning Board, Select Board, Concom. the core of Planning Board, Select Board, Concom, Open Space, Park and Rec, and then, and then maybe three citizens at large and, and just the steering committee, you know, quite frankly, any committee you get on, if there's five members, there's three people that are gonna produce most of the work. If there's seven people, there's five that are gonna be key. So, you know, maybe we can narrow it down that way, but make sure we involve in the subcommittees.
Okay, I'm gonna take a more Ray position here in contrast to that and say, I might be for having a bigger initial group, so that we've made a big tent, and we're not excluding lots of these groups who are all very committed to the future of the town. And then as we get into subcommittee work, some of them might kind of merge. Or, you know, they might find that their charges are overlapping, and so I don't know, Energy and Resiliency is meeting with Concom one week because they're talking about wetlands issues, and then they're meeting another week DPW because they're talking about power lines. Fluid in the subcommittees, but, but let everyone know they're welcome at the beginning.
I can definitely see Parks, Parks and Rec and Open Space combining efforts and, you know, talking about the disposition of, you know, Mill Pond, et cetera. I, I take the approach that it's like herding cats. You know, you got too many tried disparate views or whatever, and, and again, I, I was not involved, I wasn't on the board back when the master plan was done before. But I think a, 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 a narrow group that can then develop, oh, we need these inputs from others.
Exactly, and that's the beauty of the subcommittees.
Okay, so then, so I guess this is a question for Brian with, with chiming in from Rob perhaps. Who would be your core group that you would suggest?
Oh, I, I, I like the, well, kind of the Kohasset thing, but you know, with, with our.
So which groups are those?
So Kohasset is Planning Board, Open Space, Harbor Committee. Historical Committee.
I mean, that's so different. But you're thinking about the number, which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Well, no, they, they had nine.
Five plus three at large. So our five would, would be Planning Board, Select Board.
Concom.
Concom.
Open Space, Parks and Rec.
Park and Rec.
That's five right there.
Right, and then you get three others who hopefully will be bringing stuff to the table.
You don't do Energy and Resilience, you don't do DPW, you don't do.
They can fit into the subcommittees.
Okay, and then three, three.
At large.
At large?
Yeah, so to me, at large means people who are not, or specifically not on boards, committees and commissions.
To, to me, they could be.
They could be.
I don't know, Chris, do you, how would you see at large?
Usually one of them's a business leader. And, and one is typically a real estate agent. I've seen that again and again. And one that is a lawyer, land use lawyer. Those, those representative sample of what I see.
Well, we would have the real estate if Wendy Willis was gonna get involved from Park and Rec, so that's, that's the real estate opinion.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't know who it would be from Parks and Rec. They would have to make that.
Hopefully it'd be Doug, but.
Could be.
I don't know, I just feel like we're, I don't know, I feel like we're leaving out some key players.
Right, I, I agree with that, so.
But you want a smaller group, so.
No, I, 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 look, you know, i- i- if you had to ask me, I would, I would certainly hope that two of the select board members would come on board. I, 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 I think you need to choose individuals past that, so instead of saying three at large, I would say and three people to round out the committee who will be most useful. So start with Planning Board, Select Board, Concom, Park and Rec, Open Space. Know that the, the, the subcommittees are gonna be where a whole bunch of people will get active, they will be enthused with that. The steering committee, if you want to make it nine, including Chris, then you've got three other individuals, and we, we go out and find those three individuals.
So, just devil's advocate, we've got the core five that you mentioned. Then at what point, so which one of those five people is gonna be reaching out to, say, the Board of Health or the DPW, or how's that gonna work?
Well, probably whoever is gonna be from the Planning Board.
Well, I think that would be the committee at large and one of their meetings would decide.
They wanted to bring in for subcommittees, yeah.
So, I mean, all we have to do is name five boards, say, three other citizens and Chris, then you have nine. It's just a steering committee, it's not where all the work gets done.
So let's see, Planning Board, Select Board and Parks and Rec are elected, right? Concom and Open Space are appointed. Concom has a town employee that heads it, but the rest are headed by volunteers. Just kind of, I don't know, just thinking about similarities and differences here.
I think that's smart. I'm curious now. Kohasset has three citizens at large asterisk. And that might be where they include the idea that.
Yeah, is it called out down there?
They, they, yeah, and I didn't see the.
I don't see what that refers to.
Maybe that asterisk says these can be, these, these can also be members from town governance.
Does it say that somewhere?
No, I, I didn't find a, tempted to go out on the interwebs there and see if I can.
But it's not on this document, so that's where it would have been.
That'd be on the next page that we didn't get.
That seems kind of like the end of it right there.
It is, yeah.
That's weird.
All right.
Maybe it got dropped off the bottom of the page somewhere along the line and generations of saving. So now, do we want to try to put some names on these, throw out for these five groups? I know, Rob, you had had a Parks and Rec name.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the, Doug is just learning town government, but he's does a good job of listening as well as, as advocating for his position.
And Rob, do you have the bandwidth to be our planning board member?
Yeah, you have experience.
I'm semi-retired.
Aren't we all?
Yeah, right, right. Do we have anybody doing any work, meaningful work?
Now, this, this is what we're doing, kids.
Yeah, if, if asked, I would, I would, yes, if asked.
We'll put a placeholder there. Select Board, I know you've mentioned Wendy, she's always very involved in everything, but on the other hand, she's always involved in everything.
I know, I know, I know, but.
I, actually, you're right, no, I, I had forgotten that Doug was the chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Doug, Doug is good.
I, I, I take that back, I.
I'm happy to get some of these younger folks in.
Oh, that's the other thing. So from the select board, to, to be honest with you, any of the three I think are, are stellar, and it's more like, okay, do you want to do this? I, I, I had sent off three individual names to, to Chris and, and Anne, just to put in the hopper, and, and one of the names I mentioned was, was Ross, who's also learning town government, but sometimes the, the, the newbies, if they're intelligent like Ross and Doug are, and if they're well motivated, they, they can, they can remind you of stuff that you've long since forgotten. So I, I think it's just a matter of getting one of them.
Well, I think that's an interesting idea because I think Wendy is pretty over, you know, she seems, I won't say she's overloaded because she seems to be managing. You know, Chris is, his term is up, I don't know whether he's gonna stay on board or what, so.
So for instance, I, I would, if, if, if anybody wanted me to, I would scout around, but, but Anne just mentioned a, a key thing, and once again, if we go to a housing subcommittee.
Right, you get people involved then.
Yeah, that's where you gotta, like Wendy, please, you gotta do this for us. Anyway, so maybe Ross is, is a person to ask, but, you know, I, I would, I would hope that Chris would, would be interested as well.
Who's on Open Space?
John Dodge, John Dodge would be a great choice.
Or Carol Decker's the current chair.
Carol Decker's full of beans.
She is, isn't she?
She's enthusiastic, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would, I, if, if you would ask me, I would say Carol would be great, again, someone a little new at a town government, but.
I, I'm assuming that, well, I don't know, be, before tonight, I would have said, well, you, you let Open Space choose the person. But you're, you're putting this in the idea of a specific indivi- specific invitation?
Well, that's a good question, I mean.
Chris, what's your experience with this?
Usually you let the particular board committee and commission you've invited to participate choose someone.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, that, that's a good answer, I think.
That's one way to go.
Yeah, that is one way to go. Well, we're kind of faring out generally where we think interest may lie, and we could be completely wrong. Conservation Commission, there again, I wouldn't take the employee, I would look for a person.
Yeah, yeah, like Molly's great.
Molly's been the chair for quite a while.
Again, going to Chris's point, that's maybe the initial floating should be. Let us approach the chair to see what they think is the best process for their, their, their committee. I mean, you know, it's, it's always good to start out with a, a little bit of an open-ended, like, like we like write things in that allow us to have leeway to room to move. Maybe the, the way to do is to, of, of these four boards, approach them, the chairs, to find out what they think about it.
So I have five, unless you're not counting us.
Well, I wasn't, then I wasn't counting us, I mean, we're already gonna discuss what we want to do, but so a, a way to approach it is to approach the committee chair just to get some idea of how they think it best to arrive at the representative.
Well, then the other thing is, if we have three at large, there is no committee of at large. We, we will have to choose those people.
Yeah, yeah, eventually, but we don't have to do it right now.
And the citizens at large, I, I would have envisioned putting out a general call and then seeing who applies.
Yeah, right, right.
All right. Unless we want to try to focus it a little bit, although the business, real estate, we don't know who's out there necessarily, you know, we know who we know, but we don't know everybody in town. We might be surprised by who would, may have done this in another town where they live.
Right, exactly, right.
Do you think Rick Parker would be an asset to this group?
That might come in later with us, with the working groups. I think Energy and Resiliency, you know, these folks are gonna, I think. Trip Wallace is a big asset, but it really depends on people.
Maybe the first thing to do is just to do the five, including Planning Board, and, 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 and then within the, the, that might lead to some ideas about how to do the at-large. In other words, we.
What I'd recommend is just writing up the, at this point, the action item, writing up the charge for review December second, and it's gonna look like this. It's not gonna have any names, you can talk about that.
Exactly.
Whenever you want, you don't need that, as soon as you need the charge establishing the committee. So it would, it would just look like this, one representative of one represent. And that would be the formal charge.
Very good.
Good, yes.
Okay, I can do that.
So that'll be December second.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll get that to you again earlier rather than later, probably next Tuesday.
Okay, good. Chris, is there ever any thought that, I know you talked about how it was important to do this early and do it on a parallel track? So maybe I already know the answer to this question. Is this something that we should wait till we have consultant in place to do and get their input, or? We should just go ahead with it so we're ready to hit the ground running?
Yeah, you should have it ready to go when the cons, right when the consultant comes on board, because the consultant's gonna immediately, you know, they're gonna have their introduction meeting, and then they're gonna talk about the public engagement plan, and right away, that discussion's gonna be about generating public engagement interest in the visioning, so.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, so for tonight, have we, have we completed what we needed to, Chris?
Yes, thank you.
Good, well, no, thank you, thank you. So then let's move on to item four. Guess we've got two and three out of the way. First item is minutes, we still don't have any minutes. It's hard, hard to know what to say about that. Second is reports and updates. Any exciting meetings by Merrimack Valley or others? This week, okay. Affordable Housing Trust, Deb?
Yeah, no.
Okay, and CPC?
And I was surprised at how little is going on. We, we had informal discussions that were generally supportive of Parks and Rec coming forward. But, you know, it's not part of the CPC to make their own proposals.
Yeah, true.
And, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's, there's a, there's a couple of dollars, you know, that have accumulated.
There's a lot of money. It's almost like it's time in town for a, you know, one of those townwide emails to make people aware that these funds are available in these categories and.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think, I think, you know, there's a little frustration that we spent more money on open space than other things, but you know, unless somebody comes forward.
Well, you, you know, that's, that's such a, we, we hear, we, we hear it all the time. You know, we need more open space, and we all know we've got a ton of open space.
We've had, we've had a couple of projects come forward where, you know, the, the butters and neighbors are just horrified at the idea that their favorite spot of land is gonna be developed.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't think we have a million and a half dollars to spend, but, you know, I know.
Yeah, so anyway, it, it, it wasn't a very long meeting, it's a nice group of people, there's a lot of money, aren't any applications, so.
Was there any discussion in the meeting about, you know, rustling up applications about outreach or publicizing this?
Nothing formal, some, just chit chat. And, and, yeah, and again, you know, I think, you know, Parks and Recreation came forward asking for some money. I mean, yeah.
Right, exactly. Okay, all right, well, enough said. Item four, C correspondence. This trail management framework, this is something that has been put together by by whom?
Who wrote this? I believe Angus. And I put it in the packet just because it's an update about something you've been talking about. The, the general condition and maintenance of trails. So I just thought this would be useful information as an update for you.
So, Chris, I had one question about this. The first sentence says there's eight properties, and then the chart down below shows ten.
I think there are tons of properties with trails.
Well, they, they enumerate them. Well, they they enumerate them down below. There's ten of them.
Well, that's a question for whoever wrote this.
Yeah, so if you find out who wrote it, just tell them to make it consistent.
And and don't it it aren't, I thought we had uh Deb.
Yeah.
It's aren't Essex County, Greenbelt, and then there's another ECTA? Are, don't they have some?
There you go, Chris.
ECTA, ECTA owns Trail Easements and does a lot of maintenance with the DPW instead of the DPW. Whenever ECTA is called upon, uh they help, but they don't own, they don't own the property. Milpon Committee is an entity unto itself that's supposed to manage, but I am a firm believer that these. Particularly Milpon, Sawmill Brook, Dunfields, and Riverbend need uh need to be managed by the same entity. The the issues that Milpon Committee versus Open Space Committee versus Concom have about just marking trails is. It goes on endlessly without resolution.
Well, isn't isn't this what the memo's about?
I think it's tr- seeking to give to put some order on this.
I think so.
There are two charts. Could we look at the first chart, which is on page two? That's who has the custodial responsibility for town own.
That's the ten.
But but this is also where uh uh Deb, is it is ECTA involved in any of these particular parcels?
Uh ECTA has uh spent thousands of dollars on many of these parcels. Um Milpon.
Do they do they hold formal easements? I'm I'm just, I I guess what I'm getting at is I think there should be a third column here where we see ECTA popping up. If if they have formal easements.
No, they don't. They're.
They have private easements. They they have the easement that runs from Chase Street to Ocean Meadow. They have the easement that runs between Lord and Kelly. They're possibly gonna have to litigate. The uh trail easement to that accesses the new Deer Run development through what used to belong to Jack and Ellen Alden. They gave an easement to uh ECTA uh a decade ago.
Okay, so maybe maybe there's a a another table here um where we need to see ECTA pop up.
I think there is another table. This is the other table. Um so how does this differ from?
This only relates to the ten properties that we have custo- custodial care over. It doesn't relate to every trail in town.
No, that's right.
Deb was naming a whole bunch of trails that aren't on that list of ten. If you could go back.
They don't need to be on that list because they're, the town's interest in this is in getting a handle on the town-owned properties.
Exactly.
What happens on private property, whether the easement is held by whoever is a different matter. But I'm trying to see what the difference is between these two charts, and I don't quite understand.
It it talks about a list of existing trail related plans and documents is attached. In other words, there is this. These other documents that that exist, they're not shown here.
Okay, so for instance, Milpon Pipe Stave, which appears first on each of these charts, is custodially the responsibility of, on the previous chart. Now I really won't be able to see it.
Select Board.
Of the Select Board. But on the next page, we learn. That, not that page, that page, that the proponent is green belt. What does that mean? What's proponent?
I think this means how it came to us.
Right.
That came in two thousand one.
By a conservation restriction. And the second part is proponents multiple parties.
So it it'd almost be better if they didn't include that last page.
Very confusing.
So that that might, no, that's fine. That's a good table. Just to give it a table title of, you know, his history.
Right.
Well, it says, it says management framework, whatever.
Background information or something.
That's like the background. Okay, so this is how they all came to be. But so we see ECTA as a proponent there of the townwide trail management plan.
And if I if I may, please help me out here. On the table of the ten town-owned properties.
Yeah.
Is ECTA involved in any trail management on town-owned land?
Yes.
Thank you, and.
They've spent thousands of dollars in Riverbend. The the trail that goes down from the water tower at Page School has been managed by.
That's what I thought, so.
Ever since my husband died and.
So that's where I think, uh Chris, maybe a third column.
No, this isn't our document, though.
It's not a document.
This is a Select Board document.
This is a badly drawn document that has been put in front of us, so.
Right, so I think, so I think what this may, where this may be helpful, though, is for instance, if we look here at Page School, the custodial entity is the Select Board. Therefore, if I am ECTA and I want to do some work there.
Yeah.
I need to clear, you know, I need to talk to the Select Board about that. I think this is a kind of a communication.
Well, I see it, and now now we're into master planning stuff, but the way I see it is that this document says, hey, Select Board, you've got Page School there. Is there, can you work out an agreement with ECTA where they they manage the trails? I think the idea here is that if. If if all the trails are managed, as many trails as possible are managed by ECTA or some, then then you have consistency and all that kind of stuff. It's less ad hoc, as was mentioned earlier.
But I don't think this memo is saying that that that. The town isn't going to be responsible for the maintenance. I think it's saying the exact opposite. So ECTA may be involved in in some way, in some part, but this memo seems to be telling us that. We're gonna have to really manage this. We we are the custodians and we're gonna have to manage it. It doesn't say we're gonna reach out to ECTA to see if they'll manage it.
I I think it seems to me, as I read this, and we're all reading it a little differently, that tells you something. That I agree with Rob, the custodial entity is either the Select Board or the Conservation Commission of all of these. And anything that happens there, by whoever it is done, whether it's DPW, ECTA, or anybody else. Needs to work through the custodial entity in words. We'll call that the owner. You know, I don't want my neighbor's lawn guy coming over because he thinks my grass looks long. I'm in control of my own lawn and I'll, he would need to talk to me first. I think that's all it means.
And as I was trying to say, as part of our master plan.
Yes.
Planning activity going forward.
Yeah.
This this is where we might, or Open Space or whoever, might come up with an idea to to get a lot of trail management under a single entity.
Yeah, with with resources.
Absolutely, yes.
I think the issue, the overriding issue is that it's easy to not pay attention to it, and then you're pulling teeth to have someone, anyone, actually take care of it. The other question, the other question in the master plan is, um, you know, have we reached the point where we're just adding trails to add trails? I mean, there's management issues with owning anything.
Well, and then the other thing that uh, again, going back to the master plan, is is you have a bunch of homeowners associations with trails that are public trails. But are poorly managed, even though there's a homeowner's agreement to to manage them.
Right.
So that could be, I think those trails should be collected in in this document or a similar document.
I agree.
That's part of the frustration, I think, that people in town have.
I think that's right, and I I think it needs to be clear. Th- there needs to be, you know, the book of trails. Who owns them all, who owns them, and who's who's responsible?
But can we be open to the fact that we may never arrive at needing more trails?
Well, that's a different topic, but I think what we do need to acknowledge is that um. That we've moved on, you know, where we were in the infancy and then we were in the adolescence of of trails and. The idea of trails and creating them and getting land for them. Now we're in the solid middle age of maintaining the darn things, and there needs to be some focus on that.
And I still think, uh with respect, Rob, I still think there's a place for trying, it's always been, I think it's even in our statement of purpose. To make a a connected trail network.
Exactly, that's more to the point. It's it's more like we're, you know, if if it's, it's like a sidewalk on Cortland Lane. That leads down to Coffin Street. It's meaningless. A lot of the trails aren't ever gonna be connected. We probably have enough to pay attention to and and do what Green Belt does, which is move specifically to interconnection as the sole thing. That you wanna accomplish this time going forward.
And there there are connections that are just underutilized. There's long been a a connection between uh Pipe Stave and Riverbend. But Pipe Stave gets way more activity than Riverbend. Part of that is parking, part of that is one thirteen, which may now be mitigated some by the.
Yeah.
Improved crosswalk. Riverbend is, you know, has these spectacular bridges and, but it's not utilized as much, so, yeah, anyway, that's all master plan stuff.
Yeah, I would say where this is leading is that the master plan.
Yes.
It may well have an entire section devoted to trails that will draw people from all these committees.
Good, I'd like to serve on that subcommittee.
Figure it out.
There you go. See the enthusiasm.
Yeah, I'd I'd be up for serving on that one, too.
There you go.
We'll go walk them together, Ray.
All right, well, that'll be, we'll put a pin in that for the future. Okay, see, uh next, we have town notices. These are always quite fascinating. I think we have something from Groveland?
Groveland.
One from Groveland.
Pecker Lane?
Well, now, let's not be judging.
Something that was um appealed and lost. Is this the one?
We should have asked Sam about this.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I did read this. It was a use that was discontinued, and the proponents were arguing that it hadn't really sunsetted, and the town said, no, sorry, it actually did. I think that's all that is.
Yeah.
All right, is that the only correspondence from a town?
That's it.
Okay, um, let's see, administrative details, there are two things that I know of. Remind me, Chris, if I'm forgetting something. We had talked about the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative about collectively doing one of these. And when we first talked, we thought it would be on December second, which is in fact our next meeting. But it turns out that the collaborative has altered their schedule, and the presentation that evening is on chapter forty B, which. Chris and I feel is not of the highest priority for this board. There is one on Monday, January twelfth, on, what is it, Master Planning Land Use, Chris? Do you have it right there? I think you might have sent it to. Anyway, we've got time to look at that.
Are we back to seven o'clock on December second?
Yeah, we'll be back to seven o'clock for a regular meeting on December second, because we're not gonna be able to do that early thing. So we have some time between now and January twelfth, and the trick is that that's on a Monday night, so that might be something that we would. Figure out how we wanna handle that.
Do we have two meetings in December?
Yes, we do. The second and the sixteenth are usual, first and third Tuesdays.
So, Anne, we had this thing from Chris about the on-call.
On-call, I don't know what that means.
On-call engineering services for planning board?
Yes, I I wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, that that's really, that's really important, I think.
Yes, that's another administrative thing. So, Chris, where do we stand with that? We've gotten a couple of communications just yesterday and today that I found confusing. We currently.
Those communications were from the um DPW and by direction of the town manager. So they're um looking at um expiring the contract with Meridian as a peer review consultant.
I think it does expire anyway, right? We have a contract through the end of this year.
Yeah, so they wanna get quotes from others, and they're looking to do that quickly.
Well, my understanding is when we received the quote the last time, they were the only ones that quoted.
That's what I said to Chris earlier. We we had trouble even coming up with other people to quote.
Well, there's another thing related to this is um according to what we had signed with them, uh we had the option to renew. But Caitlin is claiming that the RFQ was not distributed to the appropriate bodies. So now she's saying we need to do a new RFQ, but but we are under contract with them and we could renew. So, Chris, how certain are we that we can't just do the renewal? That would be my first question.
I had followed the direction of the memo, so um my, you know, I don't have a an opinion or recommendation on this.
But 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 you you know, so you you don't know whether that's a good statement or not by Caitlin? You don't know.
I don't, I don't wanna comment on it.
How, I don't know how, I don't know how we would know that even, Rob.
We would know that if we had access to counsel.
Well, there is that.
Know it if someone uh would explain what it means, the initial RFQ was not distributed to the appropriate bodies.
Right. I agree with you.
Okay, well.
You know, I, the idea.
So so I guess we're gonna comply, but I I would, in the future, I would like to have better explanations of someone claims that we can't just renew an agreement that we've had in place for two years. That's that's the way I would uh do my own business.
Other board members have anything to?
Well, I it is, I also want, is this an open RFQ? It it, I almost read it like she was gonna exclude them from being considered again.
I don't.
And maybe I was reading into that.
I don't think that's true.
No.
Well, it was something about, yeah, that it it wasn't well worded. It wasn't clear to me that. And I have no idea what this meant about the original distribution. I I don't know what that meant when that was done, who who did it. You know, we had this conversation either with Sue or Katrina, and we couldn't, you know, we were beating the bushes and not getting a lot of responses, so. It seems like it it seems like a lot of extra work to try to put out RFQs that won't get answered.
Right, and and to find out that you're gonna end up paying more as opposed to uh extending an agreement that might have been favorable pricing.
I don't know. Tim, have you had a chance to look at this or think about it from your lawyerly perspective?
I have not, sorry.
Okay.
So we 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 just.
It's hard to know, you know, this was very last minute and and not not completely clear what's going on.
Okay, um.
I mean, the action that we're that is being requested is what that?
We move this back, we we review this, move it back to them with comments so they can put it out there.
But I mean, who's gonna fill out all the, it's a long, long form, all the qualifications on this RFQ.
The action that they're asking for is for a member of the planning board to participate in this um, this group that's gonna select. The peer review consultant. That's the way I read it. I would be. Jangiri would be there and the planning board member would be on that group and maybe the building commissioner, I believe, and that would be the group.
Well, I think it was just the three. I think it was Chris, Jen, and one member, our one of our members.
I think so.
Way I thought.
Think so. But but doesn't the RFQ have to be written? I mean, what are the services that we're seeking? It did, who's doing that? Is it?
I haven't been involved in any of that, so it's unusual for me, but um it's what I've been told.
Before, this has just been done through the planning board office. We've, you know, sought these.
That's the way I've always done it everywhere else, but this is the way they're doing it here.
So the action is that what? We designate a person who will serve on this committee once things go bad?
Looks like the only action they're they're saying.
So the way I read it is the three of those people will end up producing the RFQ. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, I don't see an RFQ. I, that's what I don't. It's.
I read it that it's something will be um distributed and um we we can comment on it. Or have no comments, but um that will go out and then will be the selection committee. Presumably, um that'll pick the consultant. That that's the way I read it.
But is RFQ form blank? I mean, it's not filled out, right?
I I don't know anything about it, really. I do, you know, I received it like you did.
Yeah.
Ordered it immediately when I got it.
Yeah.
Not, as I, you know, mentioned, at all the way I've done things previously. That's the way they're gonna do it here.
Yeah, I see that. That's why we're all perplexed by it.
I'm just wondering um. If this, this strikes me as an unusual way to go about it. It strikes me that a decision was made without consulting us first, and I'm not real happy about it.
No.
I mean, it it, you know, if somebody came to us and said, look, we we got a problem here. If somebody came to us and said, look, we we got a problem here and we, you know, we're thinking this is the best way to go about solving it. And then we have a discussion and then it turns out this is a good way to solve it, something new, something different, something innovative. That's great. But just to be told that we need to supply a member to do this when we're not, we don't even understand how it works.
Should we try to take this up at a future meeting and ask for someone to come and explain it to us? I don't think that's going to meet with much favor either. There seems to be some kind of.
They're gonna, yeah, I think they they're going to proceed with what what they've outlined and um, you know.
And you keep saying it's blank. It's it's filled in.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's filled in. They're they're. They want to know if we want to change the document in front of us. And they want to get it out really quick.
No, I just don't understand what the rush is. We have a document.
Because of year end, they they want to get it out, but in 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 a in a in time enough to have someone on board for January first.
Which we could do if we just renew the one we have.
If we extended it.
Which is likely what will end up happening anyway if no one answers.
Can can can.
Is there anybody who's eager to be?
Yes, could I could I go in Thursday and talk to Caitlin about this? And find out what's behind it?
Yeah, please.
Do you mind?
No, I I I.
Well, I think I think I would like a little bit more background, but it sounds like we do.
Yeah, it it sounds like, right. So, so I think in the meantime, everybody's got to look at this to see if they would change anything in it. That's what's really being told to us. But I I think, you know, based upon, I think, what Brian or or. Ray just said, I I think we have to insert ourselves in back into some of this stuff. Tim, if 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 I had a question or two that you might be helpful on after speaking with Caitlin. Do do you, uh, would you be available to discuss anything?
Yeah, sure, Thursday.
Or Thursday or Friday. I mean, I I.
Yeah, Fri- Friday, I'm traveling Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, but uh Thursday I'll be around, Rob.
Okay, so if I would go in and and then I tried to communicate to you what's going on, but I think this. What it is is they're presenting us with a document that they want to know whether we want to change it or not. Because it's going out so that they can get bids back by a certain date and and then we can make, I guess, three of us. Uh, whatever, they formed some sort of committee that we weren't involved in forming, uh, can can make a decisions to who to hire.
Yes, yes.
So I'll go up on Thursday and I imagine I'll be talking to Caitlin and to Angus.
So this hiring that used to be done by the planning board got centralized and the town procurement process, it's, I see.
Yeah, yeah. And then there's this initial vague thing about, gee, you already have an agreement and. It's, you should be able to renew it except you didn't do something uh correct initially. And this is all about a damn thing that no one responded to the last time, so we're not going to be sued by anybody because no one. No one lost out.
The initial RFQ was not distributed to the appropriate parties. As a result, I do not believe it is in the town's best interest to extend Meridian's contract.
Right, right, right. So, so we have, we, it's not like we're building a building and 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 we did something wrong and someone that didn't get the work and come back and say they're aggrieved.
But the way I read this, this also indicates that they don't want to use Meridian anymore.
Well, that's what I was going to say. It seems as if there there may be no one who has, who was aggrieved. But there may be someone who's wishing they had responded the first time and didn't.
But it's not Meridian's fault that we didn't distribute the RFQ.
Why wouldn't they want to use Meridian? Is there a problem?
We have no idea. We have, all of this is very speculative.
For us, this is, we engage the personnel.
We do, and this is not with any town money at all, I will point out. This is all. An escrow account that is established and handled completely within the planning board bounds.
If we're happy with Meridian and we don't have to change because we have a renewal agreement, then that's the best case scenario.
And I I I also like the idea that, you know, in the future. We can open it up and, you know, we used to have a few different engineering companies that would help us out.
Yes, we just haven't gotten the responses. Remember, we had a quite a time there when we had two, one specifically for larger projects and one for smaller because.
My idea.
We needed that, we needed that uh capacity.
Well, yeah.
And it worked out well. So I don't have a, you know, I don't mind necessarily extending the search, but the way the process has been handled is. Less than clear.
So.
And I I don't want to exclude Meridian from the possibility of, I don't want to. Make it impossible to extend Meridian's contract. Why is it not in the town's best interest just because we didn't distribute the RFQ properly?
We don't know the answer.
No, I think, you know, there are things we don't know. They're just things we don't.
We're just speculating now.
We're being asked to take action without having all the information, which.
Well, I I'd be fine with, you know, Rob and. You know, we chatting with Tim, you know, just. Just do it, yeah.
Yes, and then um and then uh we can always designate.
Are you in on Thursday?
Uh, no, my hours will be up by then, but I can, I I can certainly be available.
No, yeah, right. Well, if if I I would just, I would just text you if I needed you. Is that okay?
Yep.
And I probably won't, but just, you know, if if you get a text from me, don't be surprised.
Yeah, they're actually in this letter. It's to me and they're not really asking for anything. From the board, they're just explaining what's going to happen.
Right.
I'm not even sure this RFQ advisory group will decide who the consultant is if we get. More than one response. So I really don't know what to tell you.
The only, yeah, the only thing, yeah, the only thing they really asked of us is if you see something in this RFQ that you want to comment on. Feel free to comment on it.
Right, yeah, they're not, they're not explaining anything.
Right.
Yeah, they're asking me if I want to comment. It, I just for you because it's your, because they've they've mentioned a planning board member.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Okay, well, whatever.
We 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 all pull together in this department, so we all take a look at it.
Thank you.
See what we can come up with, then we'll get that back to you as soon as we can. So, Chris, what are you, are you happy with? Are you going to take some action on this tomorrow or can you wait till next week? I think they.
I can uh. I'll wait till next week and and see what happens on Thursday. I mean, I'll wait as long as I can with getting instruction here and then. It's an issue of um, you know, no.
Yeah, well, I I think at this point, we received this so last minute that. None of us, including you, can have had any time to meaningfully comment on the RFQ, so we're, we're going to take some time to do that.
Right, in the interim, I think people should be reading it and seeing if it had to go out, whether they're comfortable with it.
Right, okay. All right, not trying to drag our feet, but just trying to understand the background of what we've been asked to do. Okay, uh, so that was. An administrative detail. Uh, future meetings, we know, Horsley Witten, if you and Paul agree and Lori Kennedy can come, she'll do that on the second of December?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I just ask the board, did, was anybody, did they, Caitlin or anyone reach out to the planning board separately? Asking for a member on this RFQ advisory group?
No, no.
No, it's all been.
Your your memo, I think, your your email to us was probably the first time any of us heard anything about this.
Right, it came out of the blue to me.
Twelve forty-one yesterday.
Yep. Okay, Major Boyd Drive Bond Release, that's pending uh Mr. Crowe, I think, right?
He's got to advertise. That's a public hearing requirement, which he um is um contesting, but the regulations are pretty. Clear on that, so he's got to advertise that and that'll be on the sixteenth.
Oh, will be, okay.
Gets the added.
All right, so we're hoping that for the sixteenth and then. Comprehensive Plan Committee Charge, we talked about that. We'll, we'll uh. You'll send us a draft and we'll firm that up along with the proposition of the committee, right? On the second. Okay, any other, anything waiting in the wings, Chris? Any whispers of A and Rs, applications, anything else that's going to keep us busy?
One gentleman was in about a scenic road application on Rogers Street. And it's not clear to me that actually the regulations apply, but um he submitted a form and application, so I'll look at it and. That would, that needs to be advertised as public hearing, so that would be on the sixteenth as well.
Okay.
Was that uh?
Didn't we just have one of those? Yeah.
It's um, I have. A second here.
Maybe the other one.
Steven Hayden.
We did the A and R for him.
Yeah, we did the A and R and he's, so now he's coming in. Planning on the building permit application and needs this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would, I, we we did that with the the other fellow on the other side of that property, um, O'Keefe's. I think there's a stone wall there.
Okay.
Would you, do you recall the stone wall was the property boundary?
Well, no, I'm I'm on the street side, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the regulations and, you know, the stone wall would have to be in the public way.
Yes.
And if it's on the property line, there's a question of whether the regulations apply.
Well, I would say they would apply. We we always. They only, they only apply to the portion.
In the right of way.
On the street.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's running perpendicular to the street and it's back a ways, then that's just on private property. Right? I mean, how close to the street?
The stone wall is on the property line here.
I know, but is it up near the street or is it in backland? I'm confused.
It's up on the street.
Oh, well, I don't know.
So he's probably looking for a driveway.
Yeah.
Thirty-foot wide driveway between two trees. Trees aren't affected, the stone wall is.
Okay, yeah, no, if it's along the street, then it is, yeah.
It is ours, absolutely.
Yeah, if it's along the street. It could also be the property line, but, yeah.
It is a property line, so that's that determines the interpretation, so.
We we need to, we need to see that.
Okay.
We need to see it.
It's not a big deal. I I, you know, there'll be no issues, I'm sure.
He submitted an application, so he's going along with that interpretation.
Do it. Oh, I'm sure Sam directed him to do that, or it's likely that Sam directed him to. Okay, anything else, Chris, that we've, I've overlooked and made?
That I know of.
Long agenda? All right. Um, so are we going to be looking, I'm losing track here. Going to be looking at the next drafts of these bylaws next time, too? Or not? What do we decide with Sam? Not sure. Well, we'll have.
Uh, he said send any input, I believe he said send any input. I was a lot more than I expected to review tonight, so. Way ahead of the game, way, way ahead of the game.
Yeah, I I, I think given the time and next week is holiday week and our meeting is right after, I think, you know.
Yeah, maybe not.
Cover, yeah, no.
Right, if we have stormwater and and the committee charge and all that, that's probably enough. We'll sort of front-end load our, all of our work.
Yeah.
Um, our homework next week so that we can be ready for the second, because, yeah, people are traveling and stuff for the holiday. Okay, well, yeah, we're we're in good shape on those bylaws. Um, so that's great.
So are we commenting on them in the meantime, Anne, or should I, because?
I think if you have comments.
You get comments to me and then I.
Fine, okay.
Be with them.
Yeah, yeah, because I have a few.
Yeah, yeah, if you've got them, let's get them to Chris and, but we won't necessarily take it up as a group until. Um.
Meeting.
Until the meeting.
Yep, oh, yeah.
All right. Is that all? So I will.
Did we ever formally, for the record, uh, thank Tim for uh coming back into the fold?
Well, you can thank.
Thank you, Ray.
Didn't we send chocolates or something?
I think I was at the the select board meeting where they approved it, so I.
Yes, you were. That's right, Anne. I got, I got a lot of support. No, that was very nice. Nice things were said, yeah.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate you back on the board.
Happy to help. It's a good group, a good group of people.
All right, well, we've had the latest meeting that we've had for a while, but.
Yeah, I know, I know. You got a lot done. That's good.
All right, well, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor.
For that, okay.
Have a good night. Have a good night.